I don't know, the county director, yeah.
Yeah. I would even call like all about transportation is pretty close and just see if you guys work with it. If, you know, if that's what, if that's what social services have a program themselves, because it may be, you know, who knows, it could be.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This meeting of your Pontiac City Council is hereby called to order at six oh one P M for June twentieth two thousand and twenty-three. We turn our eyes to the Honorable William Parker Junior to introduce this evening's invocation. You can do it from there.
Good afternoon, brother President, all council members. We just wanted to invite Pastor Berry to come and share with us this afternoon for our invocation.
Pastor Cassandra Bear.
Amen. Amen. Good evening. Let us pray. Father, in Jesus's name, we thank you for this day, for this is the day the Lord have made, and we will rejoice and be glad in it. Father, we trust in you with all our hearts, with all our minds. We lean not to our own understanding. But in all our ways, Father, we acknowledge you, and in doing so, Father, you will direct our path. Father God, give us the guidance in this meeting tonight, because a lack of guidance causes a nation to fall. But victory is won through many advisors, and so we thank you tonight for this council. We thank you tonight for the mayor and his administration. We thank you for the wisdom and the courage to do what is right. We thank you for an effective meeting that will produce results for our families, for our communities, Father, and most of all, for the city of Pontiac. Give us the ability to work together in harmony, even when there is honest disagreement. There is no place for commute, for confusion, for where there is confusion, there is every evil word. And so we thank you for your peace, and we thank you for your protection, and I pray for the agenda that is set before us today. That has given us an assurance of what will please you and what will benefit those who live in and work in and around this great beloved city of Pontiac. We thank you for it now in the name of Jesus, and everyone said amen.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, without borders, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing as we have a moment of silence. Remember the four gunshot victims, that recent incident that took place in the North Hill Farms community in the city of Pontiac. One of those was a fatality, so we did have a loss of life. And we also pray and hold in our thoughts the three accident victims for the vehicle that left the roadway at Martin Luther King and Osman. Three individuals were very seriously wounded, so please join us as a community for a moment of silence to remember the victims from both of those incidents. Thank you. You may be seated. Roll call, Madam Deputy Clerk.
Carrington. Goodman. James. McGinnis.
Present.
Nicholson.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Rutherford.
Present.
Present, you have a quorum?
Quorum being established. I did hear from President Pro Tem Carrington that he anticipated he may not be able to attend tonight. We extend our prayers and well wishes for him and his family. His mother was in a serious vehicular accident, and his niece also suffered some serious injuries over an incident in recent days. So we extend our prayers and well wishes to our colleague and his family. Could I please have a motion to excuse Council Pro Tem Carrington for personal reasons? It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. I have not heard that Councilman Goodman will be absent, so I anticipate that he will be joining us shortly, so I won't include him in this motion. With that, here in our discussion, roll call, Madam Deputy Clerk on the motion authorizing excusing of Council Pro Tem Carrington from this meeting for personal reasons.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Five yeas, no nays.
That motion carries, and he is therefore excused. Is there a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Parker. That motion is now before us. Yes, ma'am.
Want to add to the agenda, the blocking of several streets with the upcoming fireworks parade on the twenty-fifth of June?
Well, that motion, the resolution for authorizing the fireworks display is already on the agenda?
Yes, but I want to make them, I want to add to the agenda.
You don't want to just talk about it then?
Because I want, uh, wanted to be an action item. Would it not be an action item if I did it that way or if I did it that way?
Action item, discussion items?
Uh, well, what I'm trying to do is make sure that it's done and not just assigned, so the mayor has his head up, he want to ask a question.
I don't want to be out of order, though, Mr. President, but I might be able to shed some light on that. You would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add something?
Right, but I'm asking, would it be better that I discuss it, we have a discussing item, discussing the event, in your opinion?
Unless we have a resolution or a motion already queued up to add to it, then we'd be adding a discussion item.
Okay, so I would need to write up, do a resolution, incorrect.
I'm figuring out on the fly what you're asking, so.
So I'm trying to make sure that these streets are blocked off on June the twenty-fifth and not just a sign put up. And so I'm asking, would it be better if I add a resolution and/or would I add, or do I do a discussion of it? Because I want it to be done, I don't want it to just be discussed.
All right, so I will interpret that to mean you would like to amend the agenda to add a resolution requiring closure of streets on June twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty?
That is correct.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved by Rutherford, seconded by James. Mayor Grable, did you want to speak to the motion now that it's on the floor, the motion to amend?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. We anticipated that concern, and so we do have a proposed resolution to address that, that I believe has been distributed into everyone's desktop.
All right, already on the agenda is the resolution to approve an application for Carson of the Stars fireworks display at M one concourse on June twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. So the final therefore be resolved. You're, you're claiming that the language there already handles that. As the event host agrees to enter their contract with the city for the reimbursement of the reasonable costs associated with the deployment of additional law enforcement required for the safety and traffic management of this event prior to June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three.
Well, I thought that it addressed this. I'll defer to Deputy Mayor Stevens, but it's the, but it seems like it's actually maybe specific to just law enforcement, which I don't think is really what we had discussed as opposed to traffic control devices. So I don't know, I know that Deputy Mayor Stevens had talked with the city's attorney about this this afternoon, so I'll defer to Deputy Mayor Stevens.
I'm going to say that we are in approving the agenda, so there's a move and a second to add that resolution at both of those items that we may be able to figure out if it's best to add it as an additional resolved in that existing resolution or a standalone, just for the sake of not delving into too much debate during the agenda setting. So it's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman James to add that resolution. It would be the new number seven, and everything else would follow down correspondingly. Any further discussion in that motion to amend? Hearing no further discussion, roll call, Madam Deputy Clerk on that amendment.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. The agenda before us for consideration is hereby amended. Is there any other amendments, discussion, clarification? Yes, ma'am, Councilman James.
I'd like to add a discussion item for the Phoenix Center. The current contract that the state, the county has to purchase those two buildings and some of the ramifications for the city of Pontiac.
Okay. Would you like that to be the new number ten coming after the budget?
That's fine.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Excuse me, the new number eleven, based on our previous amendment. Phoenix, oh no, I'm right, I think. No, the new number eleven, yeah. Phoenix Center discussion. It's been moved by Councilman James, seconded by Councilwoman Rutherford. Any discussion on that motion to amend? Hearing nothing further, roll call and adoption of that amendment, Madam Deputy Clerk.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
Six yeas, no nays. That motion to amend carries. We're now at the main agenda with those two amendments reflected. Any other discussion, amendments, changes, clarifications? Yes, ma'am.
I just want to add another discussion item about the Phoenix Center place. I've been getting calls about the bad bugs and trying to find out what we can do as a city.
Phoenix Place Apartments?
Yes.
So you're moving to make the new number twelve, Phoenix Place Apartments?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Goodman to add an additional discussion item. Any discussion on that motion to amend? Hearing. Hearing no further discussion, roll call on the amendment, Madam Deputy Clerk.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington, I'm sorry. Goodman?
Yes.
Yane?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That amendment carries, is included in the main agenda as proposed. Any further changes, discussions, corrections, clarifications? Hearing nothing further, speakers, this is exhausted on the motion. Roll call and adoption of the agenda as amended, Madam Deputy Clerk.
Goodman?
Yes.
Yane?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Uh, yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. The agenda is approved. Is there a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda? Is there a second?
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. This evening's consent agenda includes the June thirteenth City Council meeting minutes, the resolution approving the CBRE Real Estate Services contract extension, and the resolution approving one hundred and seventy-nine thousand and seventy dollars workers' compensation commercial insurance with the Hut and Locker Group annual renewal. Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Uh, yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. The consent agenda is approved. With that, are there any elected officials this evening who wish to be recognized?
Good afternoon, Council, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Ms. Grandison, Deputy Clerk. I wanted to rise to speak to the necessity for voting. We have had a long, hard history as it relates to voting. Even when the fifteenth and nineteenth amendments were passed, when men were given the right to vote, women were not. And then when the nineteenth amendment passed, when women were given the right to vote, they were, there were many states that held women back and especially held African Americans back. And so we need to take up the mantle as a people to say that we have a right to vote, and we need to come out to the polls in great numbers. We don't need a President Obama to make us vote. We need to exercise our right to vote, and so I speak to you on that behalf this evening, and I thank you.
Are there other elected officials or the representatives who wish to be acknowledged this evening?
Good evening, honorable body, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. I'm just here.
Could you please state your name so that we?
Julia Ruffin. I'm going to have here for Jim Nash. Currently, we're having our Norton Street train event happening right now and hoping people who are watching will come out or tell neighbors to come out. That's what I wanted to share. Thank you.
Any further elected officials that would to be recognized? And the first Madam Deputy Clerk was Beatrice Wright, in her capacity as a precinct delegate. Agenda address. I appreciate for the community to speak on items that will be on the agenda this evening. Dr. Deirdre Waterman is first on the list. I don't see her in the chambers presently, so the next for agenda address is Darlene Clark, which items on the agenda would you like to put into the record? All right.
Good evening, Council, Administration, and all the audience, to those who's listening. Once again, I want to discuss to you guys about your ordinance that you want to have the trash containers put to the back of the yards. And once again, I want to say to you guys to consider in putting pressure on landlords to get extra cans for their tenants. If tenants can pay a thousand dollars and up for rent, and I mean a thousand dollars for homes, the people that has more than four and five children, they should be made to take care of the blight that their tenant create by not putting their garbage in a, in a container that's overflowing. So I stress you guys, please take that in consideration. Also, please take in consideration, if you, to meet the resident halfway, why don't you instrument trash cans to be put in the back in the summer? But in the winter months, starting November, all the way up maybe to April, they can keep it to the side. We do have bad snow here. Everyone here in Pontiac is not disability. There's people that's not so much as old, who's very independent. I understand your concern, because I do have that concern about tenants and people having overflowing garbage cans. But I think with the city of Pontiac not having a lot of backdoor alleys in their homes is not, every home don't have a car park, carport or garage. Their yards is not as, and their backyards are more smaller in the back than it is in the front. So consider, or take in consideration that seasonal, putting your trash can in the, in the front is, I mean toward the side, could be more acceptable.
Thank you. The, that particular ordinance amendment won't be on the agenda this evening. It's on next Tuesday's item. We had postponed it for two weeks at last week's meeting, but wanted to respect your time that you were here. Dr. Deirdre Waterman, you were in the chambers when your name was called earlier, but as a courtesy, if you'd like to provide your agenda address.
Thank you for the forbearance and allowing me to speak for agenda address this evening. There are three items I'd like to bring up related to the budget ordinance that we've been talking about the last few weeks. Council's been working on in passing the budget. And one of the things that I had brought up several times, there seems to be some confusion, so I want to restate it. There were a couple of council people told me they weren't sure where to look for it in the budget, but I have said several times that ten million dollars was taken from A R P money and put into the budget in the general fund for general expenditures twice. Once this year, for this year's budget that we're working on now, and again last year. Now, I've been questioned about that. I don't know how that's how hard I could have brought the paperwork for those of you who don't know, so I could show you where it is in the budget, where to find it. I can also send it to you if that's what you can't find it, but it's under general revenues, okay? And ten million dollars, now why did I point this out and why am I advocating to be watch out for this, Council? Because the more you take out of A R P money, the less there is for peoples who need the COVID relief benefits for which they're intended. So ten million dollars this last year, ten million dollars this year, that's a lot. Now, I know you're starting the home repair program tomorrow with a small alacott of money, but think how much more there would be and how many more people could be serviced if that money hadn't been taken out. The other thing I want to bring up is the fact that, no, again, it happened last week, and there's a pattern for this. When there's bad news, and it happened to our auditors who brought a bad report, and we look around and because of that bad report, now they're gone, okay? Noted agency, Raymond, which we had for a number of years, which is highly rated, I have just one second left, I'll continue in public comment.
That concludes agenda address. We are now at ordinance, the first item on the agenda. Zoning ordinance text amendment to amend Article Two, Chapter Five, Section two point five zero two, to amend Article Two, Chapter Five, Section two point five oh six, to add Article Two, Chapter Five, Section two point five oh seven, amend Article Three, Chapter Two, Section three point two oh three, amend Article Four, Chapter Two, Section four point two zero six, subsections A and C, and amend Article Seven, Chapter Two, Section seven, point two zero one, residential ordinance. This has been before us for a number of times, most recently on June sixth, and at that meeting, we postponed it for two weeks, so it is back, or for a number of weeks. So it is back before us now for a continued reading. With that, I'll give the floor to the administration to provide any updates or summary before deliberation continues.
Thank you very much, President McGinnis. I know that we've had quite a bit of discussion around this at the past meeting or two, and in an effort to try to propose a compromise approach, Manager Yandrick has drafted some language, and I'll turn over to Manager Yandrick.
Good evening. I have a very brief presentation for City Council tonight and to talk about any changes from the last edition. So again, this is the schedule for these text amendments. It went to Planning Commission Public Hearing on May third. City Council last heard this on June sixth, and tonight is the second reading. In your packet, there is a sheet of memo, there is a sheet of ordinances, and then the last is the motion sheet before the, before the municipal code. So why is the city making, evaluating, and making changes to group or transient homes? And I do say group homes, this doesn't directly relate to those, but they were advertised as such, and we're keeping consistency. So while the current regulations on state, the city has current regulations on state licensed residential facilities that are homes, there's not clear language or regulations on unlicensed facilities which are not regulated by the state of Michigan. The city does not have the knowledge of location, locations, concentration, or the condition of these current unlicensed facilities. We obviously have heard reports here and there from various ones throughout the city, but we do not have a comprehensive list. And while unlicensed residential facilities and homes are an important part of the community region, staff concludes that it does not want to cluster them or have a large concentration of them in the city. It wants to be part of the city, not the dominant land use. So tonight, the city is proposing definitions for clarity of different types of land uses such as dwelling units and unlicensed facilities or homes. The city is establishing regulations for unlicensed residential facilities or homes to the R three and R four zoning district, which is consistent with multifamily housing. The city is also proposing to increase that buffer yard distance from five hundred feet to a half mile, as we've shared before, to prevent the clustered neighborhoods of these similar facilities and/or homes. So I just want to recap what City Council heard on June sixth, and then I'll proceed to the, to the changes that are before you this evening. So we did make a amendment on June sixth to include from Councilmember Good, Nicholson, excuse me, to the residential facilities and/or homes. While we're using the state monikers, we did include homes, because some of the facilities are actually homes and not facilities, so it's a more inclusive term. Now, for tonight, city, staff has modified the proposal for City Council to allow an unlicensed residential facility and/or home in an R three and an R four zoning district. Previously, staff had only proposed in the R four zoning district. It still requires a special exception approval by Planning Commission in either zoning district. And then the corresponding municipal code amendments, which are next on the agenda, establish the inspection process for facilities or homes that are similar program to the rental home inspections that we have in the city. We did add language that an unlicensed residential facility and or home has 90 days after the ordinance adoption to register. They have grandfathered status for their location, but failure to register loses that grandfather establish and establishing its use in existence. So, based on discussions with city council two weeks ago and working with our legal team, we felt that this was an appropriate measure to get an understanding of this use and give a window for these establishments to register with the city. This is the previously shared zoning map. This does not show the full city, but I did want to highlight the R4 district down here and, and, you know, over here, and then there's a couple off of university. But when looking at R3, you're looking at this orange color. And currently, it's, it's zoned down by Crystal Lake. You've got a lot more scattered throughout the city, south of Auburn. You've got some off of university, there's some off of Perry. There's some off of Elizabeth Lake Road. So, as you can see, there are a lot more R3 properties in the city that this could cite, as long as it meets the buffer yard and as long as it meets the regulations. Now, if these were to be adopted, a potential property owner could go through a process, again, to, to do a rezoning to an R3 and R4 district, whichever was appropriate. But this does concentrate these in specific areas of similar land uses, particularly for those multifamily houses. So, really, this is the summary. These zoning text amendments establishes the definitions for clarity. It attempts to align with municipal code particularly, because we're missing definitions, and I think this gives us a lot more of a clear message to those reading the code. And these proposed amendments balance the competing interest for residential property and neighboring uses. So, that is my presentation. I'll be happy to take any questions you may have. Thank you.
All right, you've changed some text. So, since I don't have those specifically identified in the form of individual amendments, I think legally, the most appropriate would be for me to entertain a motion to amend, essentially replacing all of the text with what staff is now prepared. Would that be the most advisable? We already have a move in a second on the adoption of it from the previous second reading.
Exactly right. I would move, we do have a motion, if that would be easier, that does specifically address all of the changes, we can provide that to you. Or we could just move to amend the motion to adopt the text as presented on today's date. That would accomplish exactly what we are looking for, because you were presented with a clean copy of this ordinance and these changes today.
Yeah, so we have the text, so it's not that that's a surprise. I just need to procedurally have that be what's considered. So, if I don't have it in my hands right now, which I don't, this motion that you've keyed up, I would be entertaining a motion from a council member to essentially substitute this language that staff has prepared for the reading is the new text. So, that way, what, when we start debating and amending, we're looking at the text that's before us. Is that clear?
The motion is at the end of ordinance one, second.
It is the page before ordinance two.
My apologies.
Okay. Yeah. So... All right, is there a motion to amend, to incorporate the changes? And then I will read it verbatim, so that way everyone's clear. Is a council member willing to make that motion? It's been moved by Councilwoman James, seconded by Councilwoman Parker, that it be amended to amend Table 2, to require an unlicensed residential facility and/or home as a special exception approval in the multifamily dwelling unit zoning district R3, amend sections 2.502, 2.506, and 2.507 to state that the buffer distance between new state licensed residential facilities and homes and unlicensed residential and boarding houses to 1,500 feet. Amend section 2.507 to state that an unlicensed residential facility and or home shall be considered a nonconforming use of land, as defined herein, if the proprietor of said facility and or home registers that facility and or home as a transient housing facility and or home in accordance with ordinance 26-1337 within 120 days of the adoption of ordinance 26-1337. Failure to register in accordance with ordinance 26-1337 shall result in a presumption that the facility and or home was not a lawful use at the effective date of the amendment of the instant ordinance. Remove any and all amendments to section 3.203 as the same are no longer necessary due to the changes above, and direct the city clerk to publish said ordinance in accordance with state law. So, that's the amendment where Councilwoman James, Councilwoman Parker has moved it. It's just going to make that substitute language what's before us, and then we will debate it, amend it from there.
Okay. There's one oversight on the motion sheet. Staff did not make an amendment to the ordinance for the buffer yard distance. That would be the third paragraph of that motion sheet, and we kept it at a half mile. And unfortunately, there, there's an error in that motion sheet with the 1,500, so...
So, 1,500 feet, is that a half mile?
No, that is not a half mile, so...
What, how, is it a quarter of a mile? Is it a tenth of a mile?
It's a little more than a quarter mile.
Okay.
So, that's what's been moved and seconded, so that's what's before us. And we can entertain individual motions to amend if there's, if that's the will of the council. So, that's the substitute language. Is everyone clear that we're taking, basically, the staff has incorporated feedback from council, made additional changes and modified what the proposal is. Now, we just need to make this motion, so that way that's what's formally before us. Everyone clear on that?
All right, Madam Deputy Clerk, the motion to amend being before us. Roll call on that adoption.
Rutherford?
No.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so that substitute language now formally being before us. Now, we are able to debate it. And Councilwoman Rutherford, you had your hand raised earlier.
Yeah, so I, I have a question. I believe most of the council stated that they wanted the mileage to be changed. Why wasn't it changed?
We were debating multiple options, and we chose the zoning district, because there's a lot more R3 in the city. We still wanted to keep a differential buffer between these uses that are there. I think we can evaluate that after this registration process to see the effects of the, of what these homes and facilities have on the surrounding neighborhoods. But we wanted to, to keep what we originally proposed at a half mile.
Is it okay if I just do a little back and forth to make, so on the distance, if it's an unlicensed facility in our city right now, the current distance buffer is zero feet, is that true?
That is correct.
But for state facilities, the current buffer is 500 feet?
That is correct.
Okay, the motion that we've just done with the substitute language, it did take it down from their half mile.
Okay.
Although that, that wasn't necessarily ultimately where they wanted to end up. They were advocating that it still remain a half mile, but the motion before us right now and the language before us right now, it takes it for both those categories to 1,500 feet, which is approximately a quarter mile. But that's true for both unlicensed and licensed state facilities. So, right now, it'll take from zero to 1,500 for unlicensed. And then for state facilities that are licensed through the state, it'll bump it from the current 500, which is apparently part of the state minimum, that's why that exists. And we're saying for Pontiac, we're making that 1,500.
Okay, I'm cool with it. Thank you.
Further discussion, Mayor Grimald?
Yeah, as Manager Yandrick indicated, it's, and I don't know why the amendment sheet was drafted this way, so I'll have to defer to Manager Yandrick and the attorneys. But my understanding is that it's the planning division's recommendation to keep the half mile as introduced. We're very comfortable changing the R4 to also include R3, but it's our preference and recommendation to keep the half a mile. We have a real proliferation of transient housing in the community, halfway houses, a number of other housing arrangements that are oftentimes difficult for neighbors and also are oftentimes substandard living conditions for the tenants in those facilities. And so, we would request that that distance be increased to half a mile.
Discussion on the motion before us. All right, so if this, is that, Councilwoman James, you have the floor?
Well, I, I like the motion, but I did want to ask about the failure to register, because this is the, this is the key problem that we are trying to alleviate with this, this change. We don't want unregistered facilities in our city. So, you're giving them 90 days to register, but hopefully, the penalty, if you don't register within that 90 days, are going to be pretty strong, I would hope.
The penalties are twofold with regard to the zoning ordinance that's before you right now. The failure to register leads to a presumption that you're not a currently existing use, which would mean that it would be a zoning violation if you are outside of the R3 or R4 district, which, in our opinion, is a pretty significant penalty and does encourage registration. And then there are also requirements under the municipal ordinance, which we will present next.
The substitute language, though, that we had before us, it states 120 days versus 90 days. So, I just want to make the council aware of that. They verbally referenced 90, but based on the substitute motion we did, it states 120. So, that would give an additional 30 days for this initial transition, which isn't the end of the world.
They said 90, so which, which is it?
Based on the initial substitute language they provided, it states 120. So, while they were advocating for 90, it's 120 that's before us right now, unless the council wants to amend that. Is there any further discussion or any amendments? I'll just finally state, sounds like we're, there's no further discussion or motions. This is an important step forward for the city of Pontiac that's addressing a glaring issue and something that we as a municipality can take proactive steps to. And this council, and I'm sure the administration, is open to, once this is underway, if there's additional enhancements or improvements that can be made. Because the biggest challenge and obstacle is that there's radio silence. There's essentially a vacuum of information about how many, their location, their condition, their maintenance, their ownership status, all of that. This brings that out into the sunshine, and now we, as the leaders of the city, basically all of us as citizens, can really wrap our arms around better about what truly is the extent of the challenge and what further requirements, protections, and enhancements that we can put in place. Yes, Councilwoman James?
President McGinnis, in, in relation, in regards to what the mayor said about wanting to go back to the original recommendation that planning made to do, what was it, a mile, a half mile?
It was a half mile, which is approximately 2,600 feet.
Okay, in, in reference to that, could we do a straw vote to see if, if there's support to go back to that original number?
Of course.
Because, you know, my concerns have been met. I, I, I thought you, we were trying to overfix the problem. When you're limited down to one district, one, that it, it just, it could potentially, you know, be hurting us more than it's helping us. So, we've got it spread out more around the city, but we also do not want them that close together, because we've heard that feedback from residents that they just don't want multiple of these facilities on the same street and that. So, we, we do need to get a good amount of separation between these buildings.
Sure, so right now, the language before us says 1,500 square feet. And so, I'll just go down the road. This isn't binding, but just gives us a sense on if there's an appetite for an amendment.
Yeah.
I think that's what you're trying to gauge.
Yeah.
Would you like it to be the 1,500? Or would you like to see it go back to the half mile, increase to a half mile? Or are you eager to see it changed to a different distance? So, but the primary question is 1,500 or a half mile?
Or their original recommendation, which was a half mile.
That's right.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Parker, your sense?
About 1,500 or a half mile? I think I said that I would like for it to be closer than the previous discussion.
So, you've, in the range, you'd like it to be less than a half mile. Right now, though, that would be 1,500 square feet, at least the language before us. Councilwoman James?
I'm okay with going to a half mile.
You'd like to go up to the half mile?
Yeah.
Councilman Goodman?
Keep it where it is.
Councilman Nicholson?
1,500.
Councilwoman Rutherford?
Keep it where it is.
And I'd be inclined to keep it where it is, which is essentially like a quarter mile, which still provides a great deal of distance, but that we can always lift up the hood if we find that that's not serving the neighborhoods and residents well.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, roll call on adoption of the zoning ordinance text amendment. Madam Deputy Clerk?
Yes.
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 That motion carries. The zoning ordinance is hereby amended. And now is there, we're now at the municipal code ordinance text amendment for Article 25, Chapter 26, transient housing, to clarify Article 25, transient housing facilities. Again, similarly, this is sort of partnered, this is the municipal code portion of this same issue. We give the floor to the mayor administration for updates and information.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll turn it over to Manager Yandrick.
There we go, thank you. These municipal code amendments complement the zoning amendments that you just passed. The large item here is the fact that this establishes the registration program for resident, unlicensed residential facilities and or homes. It really creates that rental inspection process. I will give the floor to the city's attorney, Morgan McAteamme.
Good evening, council. As Manager Yandrick stated, the primary changes to this municipal ordinance is the registration requirement. As I stated earlier, there are consequences for failure to register. Specifically, under this municipal ordinance, failure to register or renew your registration, because there is an annual renewal requirement, is considered a municipal infraction, so they can be charged as, with a civil infraction, which does carry with it fines and costs. And failure to register for a period of six consecutive months is a misdemeanor. So, failure to register and failure to consistently register is a serious issue, and that is dealt with in this modification. In addition, one of the major changes is, in addition to registration, there needs to be a designated responsible local agent. This means that for houses and facilities that have a, an owner that lives out of state or out of the county, they have to designate, designate someone locally within either the county or the city specifically to be responsible in the event that there is any issues. And they need to be available to report to all of the tenants to conduct any repairs or maintenance that is necessary to make sure that these houses are kept in good working order. The goal of the administration has always been to make sure that our residents are safe, and that is what these amendments are doing. There are some other changes throughout the ordinance, just to clarify language. If you guys have any questions about any of those, I would be happy to address them. But in addition, this does specifically require registration for boarding and lodging houses, unlicensed residential facilities and or homes, and state licensed residential facilities and or homes, in addition to all of the other transient housing facilities that were previously listed in the ordinance. So, if anyone has any questions, I would be happy to answer.
Just to confirm, there is no additional amending of this reading before us, because it, it doesn't explicitly include, the zoning text amendment handles those items. We don't need to try and map that verbatim.
Exactly, and the changes to the zoning ordinance, those dealt specifically... Exactly. And the changes to the zoning ordinance, those dealt specifically with zoning issues and not with municipal issues. So there weren't additional changes that are present in this version.
Very good. A discussion on the motion before us. This uh is, for the community's benefit, this is some of the day-to-day practical application for city staff, for city hall, to implement what are the policy that's already been spoken about in terms of zoning. Um, so it does speak to penalties, to Councilman James's point in the previous motion. It speaks very specifically to penalties that if property owners and landlords uh totally thumb their nose at us, the city, at the residents, at our requirements, there are very serious um financial and legal ramifications uh that the city can pursue. So uh it is in every property owner's best interest to adhere to the safety and registration and, and just quality, uh quality of life uh requirements that are in place now. Councilman James?
Yeah, I really like that you added the uh designated responsible local party. Uh, that's gonna make a huge difference because when we had the uh fire fatality last year, uh, when those people died in that house fire, uh, that was one of these facilities, uh, we were not able to get in touch with the owner. And uh it was very difficult because the owner was out of state. And who exactly was the one, the responsible party, I'm not sure that they still know that. So this is really very uh good that you've added that this designated person who is local is required to be, to be uh identified. That's gonna be a huge help.
Very good. Further discussion? Speakers, this having been exhausted, roll call on adoption of the municipal code ordinance text amendment. Madam Deputy Clerk?
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Yes?
Rutherford?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The municipal code uh ordinance is hereby been amended. All right, is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the proposed budget amendment for this budget year, reducing the budget appropriations and fund two oh two major streets and fund two oh three local streets? So moved. Is there a second? It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by Councilman Parker. This was before us two weeks ago when we authorized the clerk to post notice. And so now this is the budget amendment uh under consideration itself. Mayor Grimald, administration, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I'll uh turn it over to Director Cooley, uh, together with Director Sadowski, as needed, to discuss this proposed budget amendment.
Good evening. Uh, as we spoke about a couple of weeks ago, this is a, a budget amendment to allocate these dollars back into the funds so that we can rebudget them in the, in the next uh twenty-three, twenty-four uh fiscal year for our new budget season. Uh, these are either projects that were not completed or uh some of it is like, uh, we didn't use all of the money for the salt usage or, or different items like that that this allows us to, to be able to reallocate that budget dollars for next year.
Thank you very much. Councilman Nicholson?
Would it be helpful for me to make an amendment later in the agenda? We're making some of our final amendments to next year's budget. Are there certain items uh that you would prefer that I make amendments to those accounts moving forward into the next fiscal year? Or do you want to recalibrate and do them as separate budget amendments?
Along with this amendment, this amendment is made so that we are able to do what, what is listed within uh next year's budget, so.
Okay, so it's reducing and reassigning?
Correct.
Okay.
It's reducing and the budget is already reassigned. It's already anticipated.
You have those numbers already plugged in?
Correct.
Okay, those, okay, those numbers seem on the small side to me. Um, so that's why I asked. Thanks.
Further discussion on the budget amendment? Hearing no further discussion, speakers, this is exhausted. Roll call, Madam Deputy Clerk, on approval of the resolution approving this proposed budget amendment.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted, and this uh fiscal year budget is hereby amended. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution of propose, approving the proposed budget amendment, increasing the budget appropriation for professional services, innovative software services, by sixty-five thousand and decreasing uh the budget appropriation uh for salaries and wages in that same amount of sixty-five thousand dollars? So moved. Is there a second? Any second from the body?
Support.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by Councilman Goodman. So it's increasing GL account one zero one, two zero two, eight one eight, point zero six one, and decreasing in that sa, for the same amount of sixty-five thousand dollars for GL account one zero one, two zero two, seven zero two, point zero zero zero. Mayor Administration, you have the floor for background rationale.
Thank you, President McGinnis. Um, I will uh turn this over to uh Director Sadowski uh to run through.
Yes, um, the innovative software contract is based on quantity, so we had a higher number of returns. So the increased appropriation is to pay for that service. And we had positions that are still vacant, so we are taking the monies from salaries and wages and allocating them to the professional service line item.
Okay, Councilman Rutherford?
How many currently, current positions do we have vacant in your department?
How many vacancies do we currently have?
In your department?
Uh, Finance Administration or all of them?
The ones that we're currently about to use this much spent, move it to explain.
There's two vacancies in that position, in that department, in Income Tax Administration.
Okay, and I guess I, my second question, because you only have two, I yield this to the uh mayor. What are we doing to actually pursue to get these positions filled so that we're not continuously paying for things that a person could do whereas paying for software? I yield to Mayor Grimald. Thanks.
Yeah, so as we've discussed many times here, it's a very difficult labor market for employers in terms of finding uh quality uh workers and staff. And uh, so we're, we're continuing to uh post these positions. We're continuing to investigate uh and actively recruit to try to find people to fill these positions. In terms of the details of those efforts, I'll, I'll defer to Deputy Mayor Stevens if he has some additional details to share.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Councilwoman Rutherford, the additional detail to share, I believe you were in the subcommittee meeting. Uh, we are preparing a co, a, a more comprehensive um salary and wage study to bring the results therefore to council to see if it would be more advantageous for the city to move salary ranges from where they are.
Further discussion on the proposed budget amendment. Councilman James?
Yes, could you just give uh for clarification, the purpose again for the budget amendment? This is, this is to the professional, adding professional services, and what are those professional services that they're going to be doing?
It's the actual processing of the tax returns. So regardless of the city had to fill the two vacant positions, you would have, the city of Pontiac would have still had this additional expense because it's just quantity basis. So because of the increased quantity, you would have had, still had the sixty-five thousand additional expense. But because the city didn't fill, had two vacancies, we had other funds to reduce. And so you didn't over, overspend in this department.
Um, follow-up. Yes, ma'am?
Deputy Mayor said that they were also going to do the salary and wage study. Is that going to be a part of this uh of this cost too? Is this outside company also gonna be doing that work for us as well?
No, this would be a, the salary and wage study is a separate RFP that my house, my purchasing, this department division is also currently working on. But that will be part of next year's budget, not the current year's budget.
Okay, so this is purely processing?
Income tax returns.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilman Goodman?
So to just ask a clarifying question with me so we can be all on the same page. So the uh budget amendment is to do an increase for the covering the cost of the software that we'd have to pay no matter what because of the increase in people paying their tax returns.
Yes.
And the money that we are moving is from uh salaries and wages for a specific position that we did not fill, that we allocated this money for the current fiscal year that we're in before the new budget takes effect.
Yes.
So then this money is just moving money that would be sitting there until the end of the fiscal year, no matter what, to cover the cost of the in, uh increased amount of tax returns.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, speakers, this is exhausted. Roll call on adoption of the resolution approving the budget amendment. Madam Deputy Clerk?
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted and the budget is amended. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to appro, approve the proposed budget amendment, increasing um the budget appropriation for youth recreation programming by ten thousand dollars, but decreasing uh youth recreation utilities, water, and sewer by that same amount, ten thousand dollars?
I make the most of that question.
Moved by Rutherford, seconded by Goodman. So it's now before us. We give the floor to the mayor administration for the background?
Yeah, thank you. Again, I'll defer to Director Sadowski to walk through the details.
Yes, so the city recreation department had additional programming expenses. And again, uh, there is no facility currently, so the utility line item for water and sewer was not being used. So we simply took the ten thousand dollars that was allocated that would not have been spent and reallocated it in activities and programming for something that would be used.
Councilman Rutherford?
It's a lot of rea, uh, you know, moving around the money. I'm, I'm starting to get a little concerned. Um, do we have all our bells and whistles in order for this upcoming budget? Like transparent answer and not just what you think I wanna hear. Go ahead.
The transparent answer is, at the time of the reckoned but amended budget, May first, our year-to-date numbers were not even close, right? We were back in September. We have right now progressed and payroll and wages are up to date. So what you see now is a more comprehensive year-to-date number than when we started the budget process six weeks ago. Um, so it would've been a lot better if we had those numbers then. But yes, we've filled in the holes for debt, principal interest, pensions, healthcare. Uh, the wages was the big unknown in the city because of the wage study that we haven't completed yet. So if the city makes a large adjustment to wages, that will reflect a large adjustment to the budget.
My follow-up question is, when is this wage uh study gonna actually be completed, like an actual date?
The actual estimate for a wage study is nine months to a year.
So, that's two. Be fair, go ahead.
Further discussion on the motion? To Councilman Rutherford's question, uh, so in the city where I'm a department director, they entertained hundreds of amendments last night, just bef, you know, in the final ten days before their fiscal year ends. Because if there's any deviation, especially if there's anything over, they wanna basically reconcile the books with budget amendments they could approve before the fiscal year ends. So it's a matter of, in Pontiac, we've been doing it as the year goes along. In some municipalities, they do it maybe once or twice a year and do it in one fell swoop. So this is a way to allow us to at least look at what they are item by item, you know, à la carte. Uh, but for this instance, programming was over by ten thousand dollars for youth recreation. So they just want, rather than it to be like this misnomer or stick out, to say, hey, they spent more than approved, they'd like to process that payment this fiscal year. This allows it to be able to happen and sort of, before the books get closed on the fiscal year.
Okay. I guess I should ask you this question. So who is facilitating how we're spending the money in the youth department if they went over that?
That's a fair question. If the administration wants to answer in terms of the broader picture, we had done a budget amendment a few months ago in cr, or maybe it was during the budget process last year. It was a Councilman James amendment, increasing the programming. Yeah, so increased it, increased programming so that way they had more options, more versatility. And so, um, now that we're sort of almost twelve months in, give us a sense on why the need was for it to extend even further. And if Deputy Mayor would you like to take that?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Um, so this actually, this very, very specific item came about because of a misinterpretation of some grant funding. So the youth recreation department received additional grant funding beyond what the city council had previously approved and had went about um spending uh or programming to spend that funding. And they allocated the funds to be spent before, so they knew that the grant was coming, but they allocated the funds to be spent before they were able to be spent using those grant funds. So they were ineligible to use those grant funds for this money. So that's why we are going back and saying, hey, we have this programming that we did, but it was not eligible for that grant funding because of the timing, and that is why this specific item is in front of you. Had we not had that grant funding, we not, we would not have programmed this to begin with. We would've just stopped where we were, but there was a um, a, a timing difference.
Councilman Rutherford?
So I believe in clarity. Are we referring to the, a specific, I know what programs, I got a call today from the lady that runs it. Is that the particular program that we're referring to? I don't wanna.
I, 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 no, no, I, I understand what you're saying. Uh, I'm going to assume that we're thinking about the same programs. Uh, but basically, yes, there, there was a situation where there was a timing difference as to when we program the funds and what the grant could actually pay for. And so that is what this is covering.
So I guess my only other question is, who is over allocating this so that this person doesn't call me again about this issue?
So this will not happen again because we have changed the way that we allow grant funds to be allocated. Yes, there's an additional check and balance before an item can be um programmed to grant funding to make sure that that item is actually eligible for the grant funding.
And she will still receive her funding, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Go ahead. Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, uh, the motion before us is adoption of the resolution to approve the proposed budget amendment um for youth recreation, boosting the programming GL account, which is two oh eight, seven five six, seven seven nine, point zero two zero, and decreasing the youth recreation utilities and water and sewer by that same ten thousand dollar amount, and that's GL account two zero eight, seven five six, nine two two, point zero zero zero. Roll call on adoption, Madam Deputy Clerk?
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
Uh, is there a motion to adopt the resolution for approval of M-one Cars Under the Stars fireworks display on June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three?
I said, I move. I got questions.
It's been moved. Is there a second? Moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Parker. It's now before us. Mayor Administration, background and rationale.
Thank you, uh, President McGinnis. Um, state law requires that allowing a professional-grade fireworks uh show uh must be approved by city council in a, in a city. Uh, and I presume, I, well, I don't know, a township barred in the case of a township. But in the case of, of a city like Pontiac, it's gotta be approved by city council in order to allow a professional, commercial-grade fireworks show to proceed. Uh, that's what this resolution would do. We uh anticipated, uh, based on recent months and the, some of the traffic challenges that have occurred uh at other events that have occurred at M-one concourse, that uh council may want to provide for uh traffic controls. And that's why a uh resolution has been distributed that would provide for a contract between M-one concourse and the city to ensure that proper traffic controls are in place and that M-one concourse uh carries the cost of those traffic controls. Uh, I think there was an initial draft of that resolution that was distributed, uh, that was an error. And so a new uh resolution has been distributed that I believe addresses that concern.
Well, I stopped passing it out because I didn't know what the deal was. So what you passed through mid-week meeting, this should be in substitute of it. All right. Those council members have it. I will continue, no, it's apparently, maybe it has a different word or something. I will read it in full so that we know I can claim that there's any lack of uh clarity. All right. So it does look identical. It may be identical. Um, so whereas the city has received an application for a permit for Cars Under the Stars fireworks spectacular, fireworks display to be held at M one concourse, one concourse drive, Pontiac, Michigan, four eight three four one, on June twenty fifth, twenty twenty three. And whereas the Michigan Fireworks Safety Act, which is Public Act two fifty six of two thousand and eleven, requires the legislative body of the city to authorize the permit application. And whereas pursuant to M C L twenty eight point four six six of the Michigan Fireworks Safety Act, the city may grant a permit for a fireworks display. And whereas Gen X Pyrotechnics of White Lake, Michigan has agreed to provide pyrotechnics for the event and has furnished proof of insurance in an amount necessary and approved by the city's insurance agent of record. And whereas the application has been reviewed by fire department personnel and a determination has been made that the pyrotechnic operator and location meet the department's requirements for fireworks to display. And whereas the city anticipates this fireworks display event will require the deployment of additional law enforcement to help effectively manage safety concerns and increased traffic due to event participants. Now therefore be resolved that the city council does hereby approve the application for a fireworks to display at M one concourse, one concourse drive, Pontiac, Michigan, four eight three four one, on June twenty fifth, twenty twenty three, and authorizes the city clerk to execute the application on behalf of the city on the condition that Gen X Pyrotechnics as the applicant and/or M one concourse as the event host agrees to enter into a contract with the city for the reimbursement of the reasonable costs associated with the safety and traffic management appropriate for this event prior to June twenty third, twenty twenty three. So that's the resolution before us. Mayor Administration, did you want to give any more context beyond that?
No, other, other than that it's not identical to the first resolution. There's some, some minor changes to make it just a little more general and applicable to traffic management in general as opposed to specifically to law enforcement costs. So, uh, this is designed to address the concern that Councilwoman Rutherford has raised and I know other council people have raised as well, uh, about making sure that we're able to prevent traffic that's bound for the event at M one concourse from driving through neighborhoods.
Counselor Rutherford?
So to me, actually, it doesn't, and I'm gonna tell you why. Um, when we were in the meeting two weeks ago, we asked that the streets are actually blocked off. And that doesn't say blocked off. It says traffic management. So traffic management could mean you guys putting up a simple sign. So it doesn't address the concerns of this, of the district because the district wants the, the streets to be blocked off so that people can't line up on their streets at six or seven o'clock in the morning. Uh, and that's the real issue. And so that traffic manager is a very limited scope. It needs to say specifically that these specific streets will be blocked off. Uh, or I can't support this because it doesn't, it doesn't, and then number two, you're saying that the police are gonna be out there. And I'm just, the same question, because I, uh, it doesn't address, are they going to write tickets to everybody that, that ramps up their, uh, engine? Are they gonna be just at the front desk with tone of mist? Um, it doesn't address the major issue, which is the people lining up on those streets the day of this event. So traffic management is too broad. I mean, I need to be specific. Okay, go ahead.
Mayor Grimaldi?
Yeah, so your, your concerns are heard, uh, and I think we agree with what you're driving at. But this is simply a resolution authorizing the fireworks display contingent upon a contract being entered into. The specifics will be covered in that contract.
Council Rutherford?
So how can we vote on something when we don't have a copy of the contract? The contingents have to be open and transparent so that the neighborhood doesn't say, well, Councilwoman Rutherford, you didn't fight for our streets to be blocked again because that's exactly what they gonna say. So I need to see where it says specifically that these streets are going to be blocked off in the contract.
Further discussion, including whether the mayor plans to retroactively have city council consider a contract for approval?
Well, um, the agreement or contract is not a contract for a specific dollar amount in excess of ten thousand dollars. So we do not anticipate that it will require council approval, the contract itself. So I want to be clear about that, which is why it's not required for council approval. That contract has not yet been drafted and prepared, but it will be drafted and prepared and it will allow for the blocking off of the streets. I can tell you that it is the intent of the city to block off those streets, specifically Bloomfield, Harvey, Howland and Highland, and that those streets will be blocked off. This has nothing to do with whether the streets are blocked off. This is about requiring, uh, that this fireworks display can only go forward if a contract is entered into with M one concourse reimbursing the city for the costs associated with locking off those streets. And that contract has not yet been entered into, uh, or drafted yet between M one concourse and the city.
Councilman McGinnis?
So is it fair to ask the question that given the current comments that have been made, it would be, uh, fully within the administration and the city's, uh, uh, intentions to block off those streets?
Yes, I, I think I just said that, but I want to again say it. We will be blocking off the streets. This is about saying that the fireworks display can only go forward if we are compensated for the cost of blocking off the streets.
So, uh, to, to make the, the, the concern, at least for me, all the way down to the, the base level, uh, regardless of, uh, if the contract is approved, in some way, shape or form, those, uh, the residual areas in those streets will be taken care of.
That's correct.
Further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, uh, the motion before us is adoption of the resolution to approve an application for Cars Under the Stars fireworks display at M one concourse on June twenty fifth, twenty twenty three. Roll call, Madam Deputy Clerk.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford? Goodman?
Yes.
James? Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yeah.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Uh, so for the community's benefit, that's Sunday, June twenty fifth, um, this coming Sunday, depending on when you're watching that. And so as in previous years, from the site at M one concourse, often referred to at the intersection of South Boulevard and Woodward Southbound, there will be a fireworks display at ten P M, ten fifteen dark? All right, so representative from M one concourse shares that nine forty five P M, dependent on weather, that that will be the fireworks display. Is there a rain date? So there cannot be rain. Please put in your prayers and well wishes or your prayers and bad wishes, depending on your desired preference for fireworks broadly. All right, uh, now we, the next item on the agenda, um, Councilman Rutherford, a motion to approve resolution requiring road closures for the fireworks display.
Yes. So in my district and district one, every year the mayor complaint is people being on the streets revving up their engines. And I understand that the mayor, uh, is saying that, but I would like to put more teeth to it so that it has to be done because my constituents are concerned. Um, at the previous coffee and conversation, I was outside at seven eighteen in the morning, watching people rev up their cars, watching people not have any concern for the citizens that are on those streets. And so I'm asking that you in partnership with me, make, ensure that they get those streets blocked off so that they can make them go through one area in one way because it's the only fair and right thing to do. The citizens do not want those people lined up on their streets. When, and no one is against M one, so let me just state that. The fact of the matter is that it is a concern of the citizens and every year their concerns are oftentimes ignored. I don't want a post. I don't want, I want it literally the gate, the things put in the street like they used to do at Silverdome when they had events to ensure that the neighborhood, because that's what I'm concerned about, are getting their wishes. And that's why I'm asking for it to put, you put in writing that it has to be done. Not it's going to be, that it's in writing as a resolution. That's it.
So Bloomfield, Howland, Highland, Harvey?
Yes.
How many blocks down?
If it was me, all the way to where Luther Street is, because that's what the major issue was.
So closed to through traffic, meaning so that way residents could, I don't want to get in the weeds, but I don't want to screw over residents too. Okay, but so your motion is to approve a resolution, uh, requiring the closure of Bloomfield, Howland, Highland and Harvey from South Boulevard East to Luther um, for June twenty fifth, twenty twenty three, um, during the fireworks display or leading up to and during the fireworks display. Is that a fair?
That is fair.
Okay. Is there, you're moving it. Is there a second?
Support.
Okay, it's been moved by Rutherford, seconded by Nicholson. Um, so that resolution is now before us. That resolution was just written by my brain. So we'll, um, work to roll back the footage to reflect with the clerk's office to make sure we have that in writing. Um, but that's the motion from Councilman Rutherford that closes, um, to traffic, uh, those thoroughfares between South Boulevard and Luther, um, leading up to and during that major event that happens at the, um, private facility that's across South Boulevard from them. Any further discussion on the motion before us? Hearing no further discussion, roll call on adoption, Madam Deputy Clerk.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Hope everyone has a safe and enjoyable Sunday on the south side. Uh, all right, is there a motion to adopt the resolution for approval of the fireworks display held on July first, twenty twenty three in the parking lot of the city hall operated by Antonio Paramo?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman James. Uh, the resolution is now before us. We give the floor to the mayor administration for background and rationale.
Thank you, President McGinnis. I'll turn it over to Deputy Mayor Stevens, who's been working directly on this.
Someone help him out with their microphone? I got it. Thank you, thank you. Um, thank you, Mayor. All right, so we have a private resident who recently received their commercial certification to do commercial-grade fireworks. Um, and they have offered slash requested to do a commercial-grade firework display um, at no charge to citizens. They wanted to use, uh, city hall to do that. We have been working with them for over a month now, trying to get all of their, uh, paperwork in order for them to do this. I will say that as of right now, we do not still have everything that we need uh, from them in order to move forward. Most importantly, we do not have an insurance certificate from them. Um, I will say that aside from the insurance certificate, uh, the other item that they have not yet finalized is exactly, um, what type of crowd control they will have, which is a lesser issue because all of Pontiac City, um, hall parking is inside of what is called the blast zone, so no one can be there, um, to begin with. So individuals will be watching from wherever it is that they can, um, watch, right? They will not be able to come to city hall and park because the entirety of the city hall parking lot will be off limits to anyone, just as it was off limits this past, um, Saturday for our event. But I did want to be clear that I know this is, um, contingent upon them having all of their paperwork, but I did want to be clear that the last and most important piece of paperwork, we still do not have as of this date.
Okay, so with that, I think it would be appropriate for us to amend, to add language at the end in the final resolve, resolved. That would read, um, after the word city, strike the comma, the period, and it would read contingent upon submission of required documentation and proof of required insurance prior to the event, period. Is there such a motion?
I have a
Yeah.
Concerned, um, the third whereas, those states that he has furnished approved. So I don't know if we want to strike that. And has the fire department personnel gone through their piece? Because if that's not correct, then I'm curious about the second piece.
So, um, Councilman Nicholson is raising an item in the whereas's. Um, the, basically the introductory language for the resolution that contradict with the deputy mayor has just stated. So if you'd like to defer yield to the deputy mayor for him to answer. What's the scoop?
So absolutely. So this, um, resolution was prepared, um, beforehand, um, with the anticipation that we would have all of the information as the applicant had stated that they would have. And that is, that's why I brought that up because the, the fire department did say that that is the last item that they need in order to give a clean, um, recommendation.
Okay. Um, so if we could do my amendment and then I'll do another amendment on that one. Um, so, but is there a motion to amend, um, the final resolve that adds contingent upon submission um, of required documentation and proof of required insurance? You move that?
I'd like to ask if they expect to have it in time.
So we were originally told that they would have it on Friday, which they did not, and it is now Tuesday. And we still do not have that information.
As with, we have, this is now our third fireworks display permit that's coming to us. And so this has more window ahead of it than those previous two. Um, but it just, basically the council takes the action, but if we include this language, it's only viable if they provide what's required. So is there such a motion to amend?
I amend.
You move it?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Parker, that we add the language that states contingent upon submission of required documentation and proof of required insurance prior to the display, period. So yes?
Just a, I guess I'll say point of information, prior to this, to the display suggests it could be, you know, five minutes beforehand. I, I, I would recommend that, that a date certain be put in, even if it's June thirtieth or whatever, but I think having it by a date certain that's at least a day before the event's supposed to occur would be prudent.
Okay. For the sake of keeping it clean, we have a motion and then we could amend it further to add to June thirtieth, which I think is very appropriate. But right now, the amendment right now is adding the language contingent upon submission of required documentation and proof of required insurance before the display. So that's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Um, I'll wait till we do the next amendment.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call on this first amendment adding that language, Madam Deputy Clerk.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays?
All right, the only motion to amend that was before us was adding that language contingent upon submission. So now there is a motion to amend to strike, um, prior to the display and replace that by, with language that states by June thirtieth, twenty twenty three. Is there a second? Moved by Rutherford, seconded by Parker, that adds a date certain, which is the Friday before. Um, just like with the motion we just did, it was June twenty third, which is the Friday before the Sunday display at M one concourse for them to get that paperwork done. Any further discussion on that amendment before us right now? Councilman Nicholson?
So i- if, we have no backup plan, right? I mean, so if this doesn't happen, he doesn't get us this, we have no fireworks. Is that?
Mayor Grimaldi?
Well, that's true, but this isn't. Well, that's true, but this isn't a city fireworks display. This was never anticipated to be a city fireworks show. We, we had a fireworks show for Juneteenth on Saturday, but this was never anticipated to be the fireworks show.
Clarification.
Councilman Rutherford?
Um, I guess for the mayor, uh, for the administration, um, couldn't we put something in place? So that if they don't have it, then we could still do some sort of fireworks. People have been posting about the, uh, fireworks all day today on Facebook about having, uh, uh, the Fourth of July fireworks. So can we put something in place to make sure that we have some sort of fireworks if this person doesn't deliver?
Based on our experience with Juneteenth, it takes a substantial amount of uh, advance arrangements to facilitate a commercial fireworks provider to enter into a contract with a commercial fireworks provider. It's quite a bit of logistical planning to really pull that off. We, we haven't had a, we haven't had any city-sponsored fireworks display in many, many years, going back probably fifteen or more years now. We had a Juneteenth fireworks display Saturday. We were never intending to do, in addition to that, a July fourth fireworks display, and I think at this point it would be too late to try to pull that off.
Alright, the amendment right now before us is just making a date certain, saying by June thirtieth, twenty twenty three, they've gotta get, um, the paperwork in. And their proof and all that good stuff. Hearing no further discussion on that particular amendment, roll call on adoption to add that date certain, Madam Deputy Clerk?
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays?
That motion carries, that specific amendment has been made. Now, it was raised earlier by Councilman Nicholson that in the third whereas, um, I think that's appropriate for us to amend it so that it reads now, uh, operator of Pontiac, Michigan has agreed to provide pyrotechnics for the event and to furnish proof of insurance in an amount necessary and approved by the insurance agent of record. Is there such a motion to make that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Moved by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by Councilwoman James. In the third whereas, we're just reflecting that they've agreed to furnish the proof, but that has not been furnished yet, so we wanna be reflect the reality. Any further discussion on that motion to amend? On that specific motion, which, um, updates the third whereas language to show that they have to furnish proof of insurance, roll call Madam Deputy Clerk?
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays?
Alright, that motion carries. So now we're back to the main, um, resolution, um, or excuse me, that, that motion to amend. So the amendment, um, carries, so we're back to the main resolution as amended. So, um, I just wanna share, this is, this is taking place in District Seven, but right at the boundary. Um, it's been held informally for a number of years by residents who bor- border the City Hall and, and WHRC, live very near the school, that their family has been doing fireworks displays usually on or around the Fourth of July, very near City Hall. So sometimes residents will have thought it was the city putting on a big fireworks display, but it was his family doing it privately around, you know, whatever, ten, eleven, or whatever time at night. Um, so this is that same family, still wanting to give back and keep this tradition going, but do it now in a structured, formal way that there is now a process. And they have been in touch with the city for a number of months, trying to get clarity and, and how do they get to that point where they can get approval? Um, so I'm really grateful to that family. They live, um, very near City Hall. Um, it's the Paramo and Moyette and Bermudas and Delgado families, um, and I'm sure many other neighbors because it's a very substantial price tag, and so they're trying to do it the right way. And contingent on them getting all the documentation in, we're saying, yes, if you've done it the right way, you've got your certification, you're you're, um, posting up the insurance and all that good stuff and have a plan to make sure everything's safe, um, then that's kosher. And that's what this motion is before us. So I wanna thank them for pursuing it and recognizing that working through, um, city bureaucracy isn't easy, especially there really isn't a, a recent roadmap for this. So we're now in the business of, um, having fireworks returned in a substantial way when before it was much more sort of just families privately doing it, um, throughout the neighborhoods. This will hopefully, um, continue to build and grow, just as we had a successful fireworks display that tons of positive feedback um, that took place, uh, this last weekend, done by the city. It will have the same launch site, but will be privately handled, privately paid for as well. Any further discussion on the motion before us? Hearing no further discussion, roll call, Madam Deputy Clerk, do you have something? Oh, Councilman Good?
The only I wanna say, just as an overall thing, now we've had, uh, almost three fireworks displays in, uh, span of a small amount of time. In the future, I do want us to consider the number of residents in our, uh, city we have who are veterans, who are PTSD with doing these displays. I've heard a decent number of complaints at this point. And I don't know if there's any way for us to address that in the future, but I do wanna just highlight that as a community concern with these, uh, with fireworks in, uh, in our community.
Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussions, speakers, this is exhausted. Roll call on adoption of the resolution as amended, Madam Deputy Clerk?
Goodman?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
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 That motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution for approval to award the bid and execute a contract with G and A Cleaning Inc.? Moved by, was it Rutherford?
Yes.
Seconded by Councilman Nicholson. G and A Cleaning Inc. for the city's janitorial services at Robert Bowen's Senior Center, Ruth Peterson Senior Center, Fiftieth District Courthouse, and Oakland County Sheriff Substation not to exceed one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and four dollars plus the purchase of cleaning supplies. Alright, so the move is seconded, Mayor Administration for background and rationale.
Well, thank you, President McGinnis. Uh, the city had been using a company called Cleanet uh, for a number of years to clean the Bowen Center, the Ruth Peterson Center, and Fiftieth District Court. Uh, and, uh, we had not gone out to bid in some time, and we went out to bid. Uh, Cleanet did put in a bid, uh, but G and A is substantially less in terms of their bid amount than Cleanet. Uh, we received quite a number of bids for this, as you can see. Uh, that larger number of bids was reduced to six top contenders, uh, based on, uh, interviews and other assessments of the uh, proposals that were received. And it's, uh, the view of the administration that G and A makes the most sense based on considerations of both quality and cost.
Alright, discussion. Councilman Rutherford?
When would they actually start if we bought on this? And I have a follow-up as well.
Good evening. Um, so once the contract is executed, um, they'll begin services, and we anticipate that occurring within one to two weeks.
Okay, and so my follow-up, is this going to offset Vince, Vince and Larry? Um, from them, uh, doing all the work that they've been doing? So are these people gonna accommodate, like, be supportive of what this, that, what they currently need? Or are you still anticipating? I guess it's a question of, for Al Cooley. Sir, good evening. Um, so I, is, uh, my question is, are these people gonna offset the already, um, uh, overextended individuals Larry and Vince, and or are we still gonna add another position? And when, and if so, when are we going to do that?
So we're still working on adding the positions for their, their positions are more building maintenance and building superintendent. This is strictly janitorial. This, this will, the way this contract is structured, this will help aid them to where if we have call-ins or vacations, it it'll be on the contractor to, to make up those areas without, you know, Vic or, uh, Larry having to go oversee what's happening at those buildings. Um, to, you know, to stay there more often or do more things like that, but it is still in the works to add more employees to help Larry and Vic out with their positions.
And you still don't have a timeline as to when that's going to occur?
Uh, they're, they're still working on getting those positions posted and, and getting interviews done on them.
Alright, thank you so much.
Councilman Nicholson?
Uh, when we have contracts that are apples to apples, um, where we're not moving things around or adding and subtracting that it's simply just moving from one contractor to another, another, can we have the previous year's contract amount? Um, I, I'm not sure if this changed at all, or if, if the cleaning company had the same responsibilities, but I think that would be nice just to see how costs are fluctuating.
Um, yes, I can send the spend for, um, current fiscal year, previous fiscal year. Would that be sufficient?
Thank you, yeah, that's great.
Okay.
Mayor Brown?
Yeah, I, I do wanna, uh, just mention that it wouldn't be an apples to apples comparison because in the past, we've used an outside contractor for the Bowen Center, the Ruth Peterson Center, and the Fiftieth District Court, but not for the sheriff's substation, just, uh, as an FYI to, to council.
Further discussion on the motion before us? Councilman Parker?
When you guys review the contracts for these guys, if they give you a scope of service, frequency of service, scope of service?
Are you asking in terms of experience what other companies?
Asking when they submitted their proposal, they give you the specific scope of service, the frequency of service?
So the city defines the scope of service and we define the frequency, and we put that out for bid. And then they respond to that request, in terms of if they can meet what our requirements are.
So what was the scope of service? Do you have it with you?
So I don't have the RFP in front of me, but maybe Al, you can speak to maybe frequency in terms of how often you want them to service the buildings and the type of cleanings that they would be, would be doing.
So a lot of those items were set forth by Larry Robinson, our building superintendent. Uh, he, he put in a, um, a, a scope of services on, uh, what their timelines of how long somebody's gonna be at each building, um, what they were required to do, uh, pulling trash first thing in the morning, pulling trash before they leave at night, uh, vacuuming the carpets, dusting down, uh, different areas, cleaning the bathrooms, uh, and it's all listed out in that RFP of services. Um, and it, it varied on each building, cause each building and the amount of people within that building requires more services. Uh, the sheriff's department has a lot of traffic, uh, foot traffic in there, so that requires the bathrooms to be cleaned more often a day than what, say, um, one of the, the senior centers that doesn't have the amount of foot traffic going to them as, as the other buildings. Same with the courthouse that, that, you know, these, every building has different requirements, and those were all set out within the contract. And then Larry will supervise those, um, employees to make sure that that is being held up to.
Any further discussion? Councilman James, oh, I'm sorry, follow-up, Councilman Parker?
Is it possible that I could see the scope of service?
Yes, I can go bid for you now.
No, I don't need to see it now, but I do need to see it if you don't mind.
Yeah, cause it was posted, um, as a FYI, FYI onto bid and onto the city's, um, purchasing page for the public to see as well. Just FYI.
Yeah, so if you could circulate that, that'd be helpful, Councilman James?
My question was, uh, what is the length of the contract? Is it a three-year contract?
We were looking at two years initially, yes. With an option to renew for two more years.
Councilman Rutherford?
What I'm most impressed with that is saving this contract is that they are offering higher previous staff, current staff that we have. Did you guys not see that on the page? I think we need to point that out, because we have people who have worked really hard to keep these buildings clean. And I just wanna make sure that's an accurate statement. Is that accurate or am I reading this wrong?
Yes, it's accurate.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion on the motion before us? Alright, with that, speakers, this is exhausted. Uh, the motion before us is the resol- adoption of the resolution for approval to award the bid and execute a contract with G and A Cleaning Inc. For the city's janitorial services at Robert Bowen Senior Center, Ruth Peterson Senior Center, Fiftieth District Courthouse, and Oakland County Sheriff Substation, not to exceed one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and four dollars plus the purchase of cleaning supplies. Roll call, Madam Deputy Clerk?
Yes.
Come back to me.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes. Yes. That motion carries, the resolution is approved. We are now at public comment. The first request for public comment is Dr. Deirdre Waterman.
Before I complete the chain of thought I was starting with during this interview, I would like to just make a comment about what I just heard, uh, with council, uh, as council was addressed and was told that they couldn't see or take part in a contract for something that, uh, that was of concern to them. And that was, uh, the contract about how the traffic management will happen in their neighborhoods. And, uh, I don't know if council felt offended, but I certainly felt offended for you. Um, even though, uh, you were told by the mayor that you had no right to see it, cause it was under ten thousand dollars, but you still have a responsibility to your neighborhoods and should be allowed to see it. Uh, I think it was far different than what we did. You know, we had a lot of experience with M one activities, and over the years, we got better at doing it. Um, but we always discussed the plan for both roadkill and, uh, uh, the activities that are going on around Dream Cruise with council, and even had a town hall with the neighbors who were most affected by that. So not being allowed to hear it or discuss it, uh, and just, um, depend on me, uh, to do it for you. Uh, it's just a kind of arrogance and disrespect for council, and you may not find it okay, but I'm just saying that I felt offended for you. And that brings to mind, now, we haven't heard in the last few weeks anymore about the, uh, Oakland County presence and their proposal uh, in the city. Um, we're all happy to hear that Oakland County, well, is going to try to fulfill that promise to bring some offices back to the city. They've, um, Dave Coulter has been promising that ever since he took office, uh, a couple of years ago, as a, a county executive. But, um, we heard on a Tuesday, a couple of weeks ago, that, um, oh, when we asked the mayor what was going on, he said, uh, he didn't have to discuss that with council. Council, it was none of council's business because it was a private owner, only to find out two days later, as the mayor was on radio blasting it out, that it was a proposal out there. And the proposal concluded doing a buyout of nineteen million dollars to the same developer who hadn't fulfilled the agreement with us. So that does concern us, you know? And that is, uh, not the way that that deal should happen. I hope it doesn't happen to bring Oakland County here. We want them here, but not at the expense of Pontiac, you know? And nineteen million dollars for a buyout, uh, for, uh, a, a developer wasn't done hardly anything that he was supposed to do, eighteen million dollars worth of repairs, and that's why the city went into debt. And that's why, uh, we did the things we did to avoid going into default on a settlement agreement. So, um, that brings me back then to, um, the, um, ARP money. And the question is not so much that it's not there, it's in, it's right there, and I can show you, Ben May wants me to, I can show you. The question is, why is administration trying to do this?
Does conclude your time.
Okay.
Mr. Carlton Jones? Followed by Kathy Desaro?
Good evening, uh, Mayor, Administration, council people. Uh, I just wanna say, uh, I was, um, I, I wanna share this because it's important to me. Uh, I think we got an excellent facility in M one in our city. It's a shining star. Uh, I know Tim Green personally over there, I've had some functions over there, do a great job and represents our city well. We do have some challenges with the community, but that's not just a District One challenge. All of us should feel what it is to be around a facility that's drawing a lot of people. So I commend Councilwoman Rutherford for speaking to it, but don't isolate that as being just a District One. I live in District One too. We all should be current concerned in how we can work that out, and I, I believe if we work with M one, we can work it out in a way that is pleasing for the residents and for the city. I wanna say I commend them because they were one of the first co- first companies to get a major contractor we have in here, Ark Construction, to build their facility. They chose Ark from Pontiac to build their facility and work with them. That's the type of economic power when people come in here and take our companies to do major work. Now, we're struggling to try to get people in high positions in our city, but what are we doing to fulfill those positions in the future with Pontiac residents? Uh, hopefully you guys think I'm not just coming down here to be seen. One thing I'll tell you, we do very little to take our educated graduates who have been to college, been trained, and keep them in our city. We do very little to try to keep them here. Cause we don't always look out for our own. Last time I came here, I told you about Michigan Reconnect. That's for twenty-five and older. OCC, working with TDC, we're trying to get them in a position so they can advance themselves. I'm not doing this just to be heard. I'm looking for leadership to join in, how we can have a transmitional type of city. There's a lot of things I know the mayor and staff is trying to catch up on, but if we don't plan ahead to start using our own and engaging them and training them, we will never have our own residents ready to step in to high-level positions in our city. And we can do that if we start now, we can't wait on it. Thank you.
Pastor Kathy Desaro will be followed by Ms. Beatrice Wright.
I have seven questions for the mayor tonight. Number one, the flag at the Ruth Peterson Center is a disgrace. It's torn and tattered, needs to come down, and we need a new flag. Um, number two, what is the status of the body cams? Number three, um, I don't remember the name of the program and where we're gonna get the cameras that showed the license plates, but whatever the name of that program, that, what is its status? Have they been purchased, do we use them? Uh, number four, uh, with reference to number one that we were dealing with tonight, how does grandfathering apply to the existing facilities that are too close now? The, the buffer zone I'm talking about. Um, number five, Pike Street, how long's that entrance gonna be tied up? Are we anywhere near close to opening that up? Uh, number six, what is the status of the Phoenix Center deal? And number seven, who actually ended up paying for the fireworks for Juneteenth?
Great questions, and normally we wait till closing comments for them, um, but we, after public comment, just for the sake of while it's fresh, that we should be able to um, answer very quickly a lot of those questions for you and others that come up in public comment. Um, Ms. Beatrice Wright, followed by Ms. Darlene Clark.
Okay, uh, Beatrice Wright, District One, you know, and I, I'm remiss that I don't introduce myself. Um, but I have some um, uh, concerns, and, and they surround uh, uh, a statistic. And it may have been Mr. Goodman that pointed it out, I can't remember. It was the number of renters. Sixty-six percent of our community um, is comprised of renters, and I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned, because as I drive through District One, I can see homes that are in total disrepair, and a few of them, I know are, are renters. Uh, and, and I, and I, I don't want to sometimes bring attention, because I feel that those people would be out in the street if, if whatever uh, the city had in store for them, uh, would, would penalize the landlord. But, but the landlords need to be penalized. Um, I know that there is a um, a fee that landlords must pay uh, yearly. Maybe we need to raise that fee. Um, I'm concerned that many homes in District One are in disrepair, and I'm really concerned about one that was a glistening home. And now, the garage door is bent, um, the yard is terrible, and, and, and I just don't know what's happening. Um, today I was driving down, um, on another point, today I was driving down Telegraph, and I spotted five youngsters crossing Telegraph. I knew these were Pontiac kids, and it frightened me to death that one of those youngsters, because they couldn't have been more than, between, say, six and ten. And they were crossing Telegraph at rush hour. And um, I just wanna encourage parents to know where your children are. And on that point, I wanna encourage parents during this celebratory time that we're entering with the fireworks, to, to be with your children, and to encourage peacefulness during this time. I know, and I, and I too, um, applaud uh, M1 concourse. I want to uh, maybe suggest that M1 concourse maybe use your bulletin board to thank Pontiac residents, and encourage peacefulness during this time, because it, it just blows me away that during Juneteenth celebrations, there was so much violence. Uh, sometimes we, we, I guess we lose our memory for, for what it is to be a kind person. And so I, I hope we can encourage our citizens. Thank you.
Ms. Darlene Clark, your public comment.
Good afternoon again, council and administration. I'm speaking as a resident of-
Is it on?
It's the red light?
Oh, yeah, sorry, just for my angle, I couldn't see the red light.
Okay. Um, I'm a resident of Pontiac, once again, speaking as a resident. This question I have is for the administration, and please answer it for the residents. I'm asking on their behalf. According to your ordinance that you just passed, you said that the um, the tenants for the transit homes have ninety to a hundred and twenty days to register. The problem with that, they, they, when they come into these halfway homes, they only there for ninety days up to a hundred and twenty days. Very few are there a hundred and twenty days, but the, the standards for them to stay there is ninety days. Once again, six people and under are considered renters. With that being said, these landlords, once again, are getting away when bringing these transit homes into the neighborhood. So as in District One, we have multiple homes on every street, basically in District One, um, all the way up to Huron Street that has six and less that's not registered them as renters. No, but that's what I wanted to make clear on that one. Then another thing I'm concerned, this is for the administration as well. I appreciate M1 for the welcome and the community into the, um, us and to the, um, to their, uh, facilities. But what the problem is, that the administration to date, having to July, maybe August, to complete construction. Franklin Road is already congested on both sides, going e- going up, going down. My concern is this, now that you got all this heavy traffic going through, where is M1 traffic's gonna go? It's a, a dilemma. Where is they're trapped in? No, we don't want them through our neighborhood, because it's disturbing. Yes, at seven o'clock in the morning, we do hear the noise. But now you have a bigger problem, cause now M1's at a standstill in what to do, as well as the mayor with the construction. And last but not least, on the holiday, Juneteenth, that was my family member who got hit. That was a clerk. And let me tell you this, Martin Luther King is known for people riding up and down the street. This man was not drunk, this man was not high, he was literally speeding. I talked to my family member to- today, even before I came here to get updates. My cousin, my first cousin, is on respiration. He has both legs broken. He cannot feel his legs. Right now, they're at a standstill as what to do. Mayor, I appeal to you, not because it's my family, because everybody in Pontiac is my family. But on the Fourth of July, on other major holiday, you have the sheriff out there. They up and down the streets-
That does conclude your time.
Could I just say this last little thing? Could you please make an exception when you know there's a holiday event? Please put more sheriff on the major hot, on the major streets.
That concludes the individuals who have signed up. Is there anyone who hasn't spoken that would like to have the microphone? Mr. Johnson, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Those of you here in the audience, and those of you at home watching by television. I got a couple of questions also. You know, this fireworks syndrome is okay, all well and good. But you know, when you, when you, the council, decide that you wanna allow someone to have the fireworks display, you gotta take into consideration, there's a lot of senior people in, uh, in the, the hospital is both into the, of uh, M1 and downtown. As well as the animals that have to go crazy from all the loud uh, noises and uh, the fireworks display itself. Uh, second thing is, the city needs to create some kind of a guideline or an ordinance to stop locals from using commercial green fireworks in a resident, in a neighborhood. It's, it, it's, it's not fair, it's deployed, it, it hurts the hearts and minds of animals. My dog goes nut, uh, he sleep with me, because he goes nuts because of fireworks. And a lot of folks' animals is not ha- is having a hard time with this, as well as people. Older, senior people don't need to hear all the bang, 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 especially on three occasions in this city. Um, downtown Pontiac, the affair that happened down there, the, the street was in deplorable condition, wasn't cleaned up at all. You go down there for the three days it, it, since the event, it looked like a landfill. Nobody decided to clean it up. Who gonna clean up the messes that, that's being made from these events? When uh, the fellow who owns the, 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 has a Mexican affair down there, they clean up the city, they clean up the downtown area. What, what happened here? It's not fair, it's not fair for people who come into our city and see that kind of a condition. Water bottles, pop bottles, paper, cans, you name it. It was there. I got a lot more I can talk about, but I wanna uh, re- relate back to uh, uh, Mr. Jones's comments. He's right on, uh, council. If we don't do something relevant to what he's been talking about and saying, we gonna be behind the eight ball all the way. I tried to work years and years ago, along with a lot of other contractors that came in. Mr. Clark was just to name one. Otis Jones, Johnny Stinson, we came to this, this to- uh, city council meeting for day in and day out, asking for the same things that Mr. Jones is asking for, and we never got it. They always find a way to get around it. Well, here I'm still here, but I ain't gonna fight city council or city hall like I used to. I'm just gonna say what I gotta say, and agree with people like Mr. Jones. Thank you very much.
Ms. Andrea Mans?
Good evening. Hello, everybody, how y'all doing today? Well, um, I wanted to uh, mention that since everybody's talking about the fireworks and everything, that's the least of my worries, cause it's just uh, during a seasonal period, and it's only like occasionally, so it's not a big issue. But the noise is disturbing to a lot of people and animals, just like Chuck said. But since the M1 concourse has been here, I've been complaining for at least five or six years about the noise. Um, mayor, you said something about them getting a gigometer, or whatever it is, to, to gauge the decibels. But I sit on my porch, well, on my steps a lot, and I've been gauging them for a couple of years now. And I know they're over the range of the decibels that it says in the um, the whatever the uh, paperwork is for the city of Pontiac. So I know it's loud, and it's amazing that they want to do the fireworks, when I think that money could be contributed to a sound-bearing wall. Because I think that's what we really need, because you can hear the noise all the way over to the north side. You can hear it by Mother's House, and she's over there by Amazon. And it's something, if you can hear more noise over Amazon from the racetrack over there, as, so if you can hear all, all the way over there, that loud, you can imagine what it's like when you're on the same street with it. So it's, I don't understand what's the problem? If you making the money, if you throwing events, you adding more money to your facility, what's the problem with adding a sound-bearing wall to keep the neighborhood from being upset? You have older people, you have people with PTSD, you have a, a wide range of issues over there, where it shouldn't have never been in the middle of a neighborhood anyway. Um, so I'd like to know why there is still a debate about getting the sound-bearing wall. And it was all half the problem, I guess. So that's all I wanted to address at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Grimal, a few specific uh, questions were brought up, if you wanna field those. One, the, invoked the Phie- a few invoked the Phoenix Center, that's a discussion item, so we can wait until we get to the discussion on that one, but sort of rapid fire, yes, no, here's the answer, um, take it away.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to be uh, fast and efficient. So first of all, I appreciated the, the public comment about holding landlords accountable. Uh, we strongly agree with, with that point, and that's part of what this new ordinance regarding transient housing is about, is trying to make sure that all transient housing has to register, uh, which uh, most of them of these should be doing anyway. Uh, we've added a number of code enforcement inspectors to increase the number of inspections on uh, rental housing as well. And we do have a problem in the city with slum lords. And a lot of times, they operate in this gray area around transient housing, where a lot of transient housing is concentrated in certain neighborhoods, which is why uh, this new ordinance will require a longer minimum distance between transient housing facilities, and try to properly and finally get a handle on this very serious uh, transient housing challenge that we face. I wanna be clear in answer to another question that was asked. It is not the residents who are required to register within a hundred and twenty days. It is the facilities that are required to register within a hundred and twenty days. And the whole point there is that if a pre-existing use is in place, it is uh, grandfathered in the sense that the city cannot retroactively regulate uh, pre-existing use. And that's why the, this idea of grandfathering is, is, has been referenced, which is just under case law, we can't legally retroactively regulate businesses or residential facilities uh, in general. Uh, and what this would do though, is say that, yes, that's the general law, but in order to uphold their grandfathered status, they need to register within a hundred and twenty days of this going into effect. Uh, if they don't register within that period of a hundred and twenty days, they lose their grandfathering status. So that's uh, in answer to that question, what was raised. But again, it's not the residents who have to register within a hundred and twenty days, it's the landlords who own these facilities who have to register. Uh, I appreciate the uh, heads up about the flag at the Ruth Peterson Center. I was not aware of that, and we will remedy that. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Uh, the body cams on the sheriff's deputies uh, were deployed uh, almost a year ago, so uh, last August or September, uh, every deputy in the city of Pontiac is equipped with body cams, and is required to have those uh, active whenever they are, uh, at least outside their vehicle. I think they even keep them on when they're in their vehicle. Uh, but that has uh, occurred, and those body cams were deployed nearly a year ago. Uh, the flock system as well was uh, deployed in the city about a year ago. I think to be exact, eleven months ago now, so last July. And that will be up for renewal, so we will be bringing a resolution before city council to renew that program. We'll be bringing that before city council uh, sometime uh, in the next month. In terms of Pike Street, I assume the question relates to the electrical work the DTE is performing uh, right uh, next to the sheriff's substation here. And I don't know exactly what schedule they're on, but I uh, think that they're getting close to concluding most of that work. Uh, but I don't know exactly what schedule they're on. That's not a city project, it is a private DTE project.
It has been, at least what they were publicly sharing was through July eighth. And we know that there was at least one or two day when it came for easement approval that the city council granted last week, that might have pushed it back, but maybe they made up for lost time, because it hasn't rained at all, so they haven't been able um, interrupted with that weather. But so, early July is what at least was communicated early on, and we'll keep monitoring that.
Yeah, so the expectation is the next few weeks, but uh, sometimes uh, these entities run behind schedule, as we've seen with the MDOT project on Woodward. They had said it would be concluded by May twenty-sixth, then they said mid-June. Uh, I think it's fair to say that we're now past mid-June, maybe still in the late stages of mid-June, I suppose, but- But, um, we continue to monitor that, and that's a good segue to the questions about Franklin. We are not going to begin Franklin Road construction until after the southbound lanes on Woodward reopen. So the Franklin Road construction will not commence until late July and probably more like sometime in August. And certainly will not begin until after southbound Woodward lanes, uh, reopen. Uh, we'll talk about the Phoenix Center in depth, uh, in a few minutes, uh, but the other question was, who ended up paying for the fireworks? So the total event, uh, budget for Juneteenth was quite substantial. It was somewhere between seventy and eighty thousand dollars, that wasn't just for the fireworks, it was for a number of aspects to it, including, including the musical artists. Uh, the fireworks, it included the police, the additional police, it included, uh, additional DPW. Overtime and other expenses, that's the nature of these kinds of events. Um, of that cost, thirty-five thousand dollars, uh, was paid for by private sponsors. Uh, and I do wanna acknowledge, uh, the generosity of private sponsors. Amazon, uh, was a, a sponsor in the amount of ten thousand dollars. Uh, Genesis Credit Union was a sponsor in the amount of ten thousand dollars. Uh, and Saint Joe's Hospital, uh, is a sponsor in the amount of ten thousand dollars, so they were our premier sponsors, and I wanna acknowledge. Uh, and thank our premier sponsors, I also want to acknowledge and thank our junior sponsor, uh, who was United Wholesale Mortgage as well. So, um, much of the cost, almost half of the cost, was defrayed through those, uh, private sponsorships.
Oh, for code enforcement, do you have a hand?
I do.
Okay.
The phone number that you need to call for any rentals that need to be inspected is two four eight, seven five eight, three eight one seven. Our code enforcement officer name is Mr. Watkins. He's always available, and what they ask you to do is to give him the address, they'll look it up and see if it has been scheduled for a rental inspection. Cuz as a renter, every inspection has to be every three years, and so a lot of these houses have not been inspected, sometimes in ten years. So you call him, give him the address, he'll go look it up on the system, and then he'll tell you if it's been inspected, and then they'll schedule for inspection with, um, the, um, landlord.
Well, that's specifically for District.
That's District One, the phone number, area code, two four eight, seven five eight, three eight one seven, and his name is Mr. Watkins.
For the city, if you, and even if you're not familiar with what district you live in, the main line for code enforcement is two four eight, seven five eight. Two eight zero zero, and select option one, that's what's on the city's website right now for code enforcement. So for all the districts, or you might not even know where the property is, um, an address helps. But two four eight, seven five eight, two eight zero zero, option one, thank you, Councilwoman.
You're welcome.
All right, we are now at, uh, what's currently number ten. On adoption of an ordinance to appropriate the sums of money necessary to meet the expenditures set forth in the budget. Recommended for the operation of the city of Pontiac, Michigan, to defray the debts, expenditures, and liabilities of said city for the fiscal year. Beginning the first day of July, two thousand and twenty-three. Um, this is the third week that this has been before us, um, but it was, um, it's been about eight weeks. Uh, nearly eight weeks that it's been proposed, reviewed, heard, amended, public hearing, you name it. And so now, um, this is, the intention is that this is the final evening for us to, uh, consider the budget for the year to come. The fiscal year runs July first to June thirtieth, so we're in the last ten plus days of this current fiscal year. And the state of Michigan has deadlines in terms of when we've gotta get it set before the new fiscal year starts July first. So contingent on it being adopted in some form or fashion tonight, we're well, um, in advance of those deadlines. And the pain that comes from missing that, so. It was previously moved and seconded, um, by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by Pro Tem Carrington. At last week's city council meeting, so we don't need to move in a second, um, and we considered a number of amendments, those are now in, uh, the document before us. So this is an opportunity for us to, if there are some final few amendments, discussions, clarifications, um, before we ultimately adopt. Um, the document tonight, and then it is incumbent upon the finance department and the administration to. Put that in the neat and tidy package so that the clerk can post what was adopted and submitted to the state and all that good stuff. Working in collaboration between those respective departments. So with that, um, is there anything the mayor and administration wanted to provide for us? I think it's been pretty straightforward, um, the, the only changes that have been made were ones that council had voted on. There is a request for two additional changes that the administration has provided, um, but mayor and administration, is there anything else you'd like us to? Know before we dive into further deliberation and considerations?
Well, uh, the, the main thing you already touched on, which is making, uh, the two adjustments in the salary schedule. And I know that there's a, a memo that's been distributed, uh, to council people about those two adjustments. Um, beyond that, there are, uh, I think, going to be some additional budget amendments to this. In the relatively near future, as we go through some RFPs. And get some, uh, quotes for some other initiatives that I think both the council and, and the executive branch are interested in. But we didn't budget for those in this budget because we're not yet sure exactly what those, uh, costs are likely to be.
Okay, uh, so with that, Councilman Rutherford, you had a hand?
Yes, I wanna add an amendment.
Okay.
So my amendment is to add a hundred thousand dollars to the youth department, specifically for, uh, tutoring. During COVID, uh, reading and math scores went down at astronomical rate, and we need to have money, not just for, uh, games and funds. And events, we need to have some money allocated specifically for tutoring. Um, there's a large percentage of our students that are sometimes two to three years behind, and the youth and recs department is about the youth totality. And not just recreation, so that's why I wanted it in there.
Okay, Fund two zero eight, Youth Recreation Village. You specifically are talking about programming.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, I show, right now, what's under consideration is two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. In GL number two zero eight, seven five six, seven seven nine, point zero two zero, programming. So your amendment proposes increasing the two hundred and twenty-five thousand up to three hundred and twenty-five thousand, is that correct?
That is correct.
Is there a second to the motion to amend?
Support.
It's been moved by Rutherford, seconded by Nicholson, so that's what we're now debating, do we as a council wanna add that one hundred thousand dollars to that particular line item? Discussion on the motion, Councilman Nicholson.
I, I, uh, I think that that's great, um, I do think that, you know, the city having the widest reach to all of the students, um, i- it makes sense. Um, rather than looking toward our school district to just provide those services. I do, although, wonder if that could, the use of that could be expanded from tutoring to also maybe test prep. And we've had, um, you know, just wanting to make sure that there, the students that are going to, uh, you know, be taking. You know, tests for placement and programming and things like that, um, that they find those resources, because those resources seem to be very slim right now. So if the, the idea of tutoring could be a little br- more broad.
For Councilman Goodman.
Uh, I mean, if we're, while we're having this session, I'd even ask to i- increase the amount, not solely for tutoring. But I'd like to also maybe include in that something for, uh, helping our students complete FASPA. Uh, because, uh, as a s- very recent student, I had to go through that trouble myself, it, it's very difficult when most of our students in the state of Pike aren't even filling it out. Uh, to be able to go to college, so I'd say, uh, adding some additional funds in there to make sure that the city or some entity that we contract with, or whatever we do. To make sure that the city is actually taking, uh, an active role in making sure that our students are completing FASPA, uh, FAFSA. And able to, uh, complete that.
All right, the motion to amend before us is adding one hundred thousand dollars for programming for youth recreation. So that is the money that'll be moved, and we can express that, the intention, that it be for academic enrichment. Including tutoring, test preparation, and financial aid wraparound support. Does that adequately reflect?
Yes.
Um, what the, the three council members have spoken so far.
Yes.
Is it appropriate to ask to increase the amount now?
Oh, you'd like it even more than that?
Given what I've added, yes.
Well, a hundred thousand dollars is the motion to amend right now, um, so that it would be a, a new, new motion to amend. Any further discussion, Mayor Grimal?
Well, just a point of information, where is the money being taken from?
Um, so that would be on the side of the financial department, would it not be? Because we do have funding for these type of programs, am I not correct, or am I mistaken?
Well, it's your motion, so if you're asking to add money into something, I'm wondering where you wanna take it out of.
Okay, hold on one second.
Deputy Mayor.
Councilwoman Rutherford, if you look at the fund, there currently is. Three hundred ninety-six thousand dollars that is not budgeted, however. Those funds have not been budgeted in anticipation of costs that would go towards the construction of the youth center.
Point of information, aren't we giving everybody a three percent raise this year, across the board?
That is anticipated in the budget, correct?
So Fund two oh eight, Youth Recreation Village, there's two options essentially, well, three. Option one, the unexpended, uh, funds that the mayor, deputy mayor has expressed, set aside. So that way it's, can be pulled on throughout the year to advance the, the youth recreation center creation specifically. You could have the one hundred thousand dollars come from that. Option B, it come from general fund dollars. Option C is that of many different funds you redistribute, or you reallocate. So you can either within the youth recreation village or the general fund, that you could ax one to boost the other. So those are the three high level options, is that a fair categorization, Deputy Mayor, so? So of those three, they just wanna make sure that they're booking it the right way.
So second out of the general fund.
Okay, so Councilman Rutherford's amendment is, um, to, uh, from general fund dollars. Attribute another one hundred thousand dollars for, uh, youth recreation programming. Councilman Nicholson, you seconded, does that reflect a motion you would support?
I think that's the only other option except for, so when we're talking about ARP dollars. Um, based on the fact that this is directly related to a COVID expense, um, or a COVID need. Um, those dollars are all, uh, it, within youth recreation or recreation, that those are all slated to be used for. Uh, the building of the youth recreation center, is that correct?
Yeah, I think specifically they were allocated to the community center itself.
Yeah, then I think that's the only place it could possibly come from.
Any further discussion on the motion before us? Mayor Grimal?
I, I think this is a very valid endeavor, so I support the, I think, objective of the motion. Um, we'll have to work up the specifics around what this looks like, how much it costs. How many young people participate, so I don't have a problem with it. I wanna make sure that it's done in a way where any, unalloc- i- if we end up doing a program. And we spend sixty thousand dollars of the hundred thousand because the participation rate is less than anticipated. Or the costs are less than anticipated, I wanna make sure that we don't end up having all of those general fund dollars sort of trapped. In youth recreation, if you will, and so I think it would probably make more sense to allocate them. Towards this purpose without putting them necessarily in that line item, sort of creating an additional general fund line item. Because I think, I'm not sure, but I suspect once they're transferred into youth recreation, they may not be able to come out of youth recreation. I don't know that to be the case, it's, it's a question, I think, for Director Sodowski, but. We may end up in a situation that because the programming costs are less than anticipated or otherwise, that we have unallocated. Or unexpended general fund dollars, and those really should then stay in the general fund. So I wanna make sure that this motion doesn't have any unintended consequences.
Deputy Mayor Stevens for a first time.
To, to the mayor's point, and for ease of everyone in the budget. I would actually suggest that you take those funds out of the unallocated funds. In, that are already in the youth recreation department. If, understanding the council's desire, if we need another hundred thousand dollars towards youth recreation. We know that the council is supportive of taking it out of the general fund, we may not come to that point of needing that. So I would suggest just using the funds in youth recreation for youth recreation until they are completely depleted.
Councilman Rutherford?
So my issue is, I'm gonna use examples, um, Khan Academy starts off from two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and up. That's a program that we can actually buy to be used by the city for students. We can also hire Angela, Angela Jones, who has a tutoring program, or Tori Blander, just to name a few. Who people pay hundreds of dollars an hour to make sure they're cured adequately, that's why it needs to be a certain amount of funds. Because if we're gonna do it, we need to do it right, we need to do SAT prep, ACT prep, Khan Academy prep. And also making sure that we have tutoring one-on-one for these individuals, and tutoring per hour starts off at fifty to a hundred dollars an hour. Depending upon who is actually facilitating the program, and that's my issue is, I hear you don't wanna. I want it specifically for that, so it can't be used for anything else, so that we use it all of it to, to the, the full amount. And there are ways to do it where it is going to be used, it just has to be allocated to be used.
Councilman Rutherford, Deputy Mayor Stevens has made the request that it come from the youth recreation unallocated funds. Your motion that's been clarified is from the general fund, is that still the motion you wish to make? Or do you want it to come from the youth recreation unallocated fund?
So I'll do it with the youth, I just wanna make sure we have the understanding that it's going to be used specifically for the tutoring, that's what my only, um, concern is going to be. So I wanna be like, oh, we didn't have it, but you do have it, so I just want it to be allocated, a line item, what says for tutoring and or, uh, 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 cut, uh, excuse me. Tutoring appropriation, that's, um, that's, yes.
So your motion is not to add to programming, it's to create a new GL account number, specifically.
Wouldn't that be easier?
Not with budgeting and the timeline that we're on, to get adopted.
I don't understand why it's funny, but go ahead, keep going, you say it again, cuz I didn't hear it, what did you say?
We are adopting this budget tonight.
Okay.
And if we're saying, we're now directing the finance department to create a new GL account.
Mm-hmm.
To me, that complicates the timeline.
I think we may be able to address this with a resolution in future meetings.
I mean, the motion is allocating it for a GL account for a specific purpose. And at next week's meeting, or a future week's meeting, we can clarify that further, to show what the hundred thousand dollars, the intention. But I'm talking about, this is the existing fi- budget framework, and so I wanna be able to land the plane by the deadline. So that we're in compliance with the state of Michigan.
Okay, I, I'll withdraw my second, uh, and we'll talk about future resolution options.
Do you wanna make the motion to increase programming by a hundred thousand dollars and take it from the youth recreation?
Yes.
Unallocated funding for the purpose of academic enrichment, tutoring support. Uh, test preparation and financial assistant wraparound services.
I make the motion.
Is there a second?
Support.
Okay, it's been moved by Rutherford, seconded by Goodman, um, that budget amount would increase it by one hundred thousand dollars. In that specific GL account number for programming, again, that is two oh eight, seven five six, seven seven nine. Point zero two zero, and it would degree, decrease, and come from, um, the, the two oh eight. Um, revenues balance that has been unallocated. Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, roll call and adoption of that amendment, Madam Deputy Clerk.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
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 That motion carries, the amendment, uh, passes, uh, so we are, um, at the main motion, the budget, um, as amended. Uh, there were two requested, um, changes that the administration has identified. In the, um, budget positions salary schedule, is there a motion to amend? Uh, for the finance director to reduce the maximum. is there a motion to amend uh for the finance director to reduce the maximum pay to be one hundred and twenty thousand dollars? All right, um there is no such motion, so we will not deliberate further on that. There has been uh the request for DPW Operations Director on the maximum pay of one hundred and six thousand eight hundred thirty-two dollars and sixty-three cents, um which would be a three percent raise from the current. Is there such a motion to amend?
Point of information, this is setting a maximum?
That's right.
Correct.
Um so it's not saying that they've a minimum or that the position must be paid, but it is creating a cap or a maximum.
So.
It's been moved by Councilman Goodman, is there a second? All right, hearing no.
I second, but I have a question.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded by Goodman and James respectively for the DPW Operations Director, the maximum pay um would be one hundred and six thousand eight hundred thirty-two dollars and sixty-three cents, increasing from three percent what had been in there um was in the language pre- currently. So with that, the rationale.
Thank you, Council President. So on the DPW Director specifically, if you look at the sheet, it ha- it currently has the a maximum of a hundred and eighteen thousand, which was a request and a deliberation, but it was not um the the final suggested uh maximum number that the administration meant to send forward. And so this request is um putting forth the maximum that the administration had actually meant to send forward to council.
Mayor Grimal?
Yeah, just to amplify that further, the proposal as it went to council mistakenly had a much higher maximum of a hundred and eighteen thousand. This would reduce that to a hundred and six thousand eight hundred thirty-two dollars and sixty-three cents.
Councilman Rutherford?
Point of information, direct questions to the administration just to, didn't we just give this individual a raise when we gave him a new position, correct? And how long ago was that done, the timeline? I know, I just wanna see if you guys can answer those questions. I yield to the mayor's for understanding, I'm just, I'm I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, so the short answer is yes. The longer answer is this actually reduces the maximum salary compared to what is in the proposal. So if you're concerned that he might get paid too much, voting in favor of this amendment actually limits how much he could get paid compared to the proposal that it's amending.
Councilman Nicholson?
I just, I worry about um a lot can happen, right? I mean, and people that we think will be here forever sometimes aren't. Um and I just don't want to give you a a lower number uh with the expectation or setting that expectation if something were to change during the course of the year um for us to change course, I I just don't want you to be in a bad spot and have to ask for another budget amendment. Is it, we're talking about a position, not a person essentially.
Ag- agreed, um but I would just note that the mistaken proposal that came before city council is mu- much higher than this position has ever been paid and I think sends a difficult signal to other staff when they see this number in the budget, even though the individual's not being paid that much higher amount. And so if if something happens and you want to increase it again, we can always come back to city council and have city council increase it. But we think that in terms of trying to have a narrower band of salaries around the director position and trying to have some some rational relationship between different director positions, reducing this so that it's more in line with what this person's actually being paid and what other director positions maximum is makes sense from an employee morale perspective.
I appreciate the rationale, I think um uh I I'm I'm comfortable with that, but I also want to make sure my colleagues understand that we approved um for a salary study to be done, so we may be talking about this again later in the year, thank you.
Councilman Rutherford?
I I yield.
Any further discussion? So right now for DPW, the director maximum for DPW Operations, the maximum right now, the language says a hundred and eighteen thousand five hundred dollars. So this amendment would bring that down, the maximum pay would be a hundred and six thousand eight hundred thirty-two dollars and sixty-three cents. So if you want the maximum pay cap to be lower for the DPW Director as requested by the administration, you'd wanna vote yes. Are we clear on that? Sounds like we're clear, I'm hearing no further discussion. Roll call and adoption of the motion to amend, which would change for DPW Operations um for the director um to have a maximum pay of a hundred and six thousand eight hundred thirty-two dollars and sixty-three cents. Madam Deputy Clerk.
Goodman?
Yes.
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 Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
That motion carries, so the amendment passes and that's now incorporated in the the main um motion of the budget before us. Pro Tem Carrington, in his absence, um he did earlier today um share that he had a budget amendment that wanted to be considered, so I wanna be able to amplify that. It's for um a communications vehicle. And um he uh the GL account for the communications vehicle should be one zero one two two seven nine seven seven point zero zero two and he wanted to increase the amount by fifty thousand dollars. And um he was saying, and I just wanna make sure this is clear, this is right, um it could be paid for out of the capital improvement fund. Is that is that an eligible expense for the capital improvement fund to your knowledge?
That's correct.
Okay, so he gives that GL of four four five two two seven nine seven seven point zero zero two. So that's showing where it comes from. And the earlier number for Communications Department is where it would go to. In his absence, Councilman Rutherford makes that motion. Councilman Goodman has seconded. Um so any discussion on that motion before us? Councilman Goodman?
Just to ask for uh the committee in clarity, say, is this the, will it be like the same pr- proposal that the Communications Department had brought before, which is that this vehicle would be shared amongst the necessary uh departments as they go about trying to transfer uh things throughout the city?
Mayor Grimal?
Well, it's 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 not our motion, so in terms of the intention of the person who's who's brought this, you'd have to ask Pro Tem Carrington his intention. But I can tell you that if we had a dedicated communications vehicle as this uh amendment would facilitate, that would be our intention, is to have it be shared by the communication staff as needed. And how we would envision using such a vehicle is to help lug around heavy communications equipment, cameras, microphones, other staging equipment for uh remote communications work from the field.
Yes, sir.
So then just like for my colleague's sake, I I would and I'll, this question could go to the administration or to Council President, would it be safe to say that uh in can the consideration of this uh amendment, would it be safe to follow uh the information presented by uh Communications Director uh uh Bridges uh in terms of um the intention with this vehicle if we were to fund it?
Yes, uh this would be a communications vehicle, she is the Communications Department Director and it would be used as uh she deems appropriate and at her direction.
Thank you. And we didn't deliberate further, but I interpreted his request to reflect what had already been discussed. He didn't offer something alternat- you know, some alternative concept. Deputy Mayor Stevens?
Just a point of clarity or information uh on what Councilman Carrington had suggested. The two line items that he gave you, one line item, both line items are expense line items. One of them is to say you can pay for this by adding fifty thousand dollars specifically into um Communications Department. The other line item is you can pay for this specifically by adding fifty thousand dollars into capital improvement line item.
Yes. Okay.
So however you would like to pay for it, I don't have a preference.
Okay. Um so communications vehicle one oh one two two seven nine seven seven point zero zero two, since that was the first one he's offered, that'll be where it goes to and it would come from um unallocated general fund dollars. Okay, is that in keeping with your motion, Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Is that in keeping with your second, Councilman Goodman?
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion before us? Hearing nothing further, roll call on this amendment, Madam Deputy Clerk.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries, the amendment passes and it's now in the the main budget, the meat and the guts of the budget before us, are there any further amendments? Councilwoman James?
Uh I don't have um I have some things, I, first of all, we had only one night where we did the amendments and uh we didn't really get a chance to get all of them out at that time. So trying, you know, approving tonight, we really are short cutting ourselves, cause I'm not really, really comfortable with what we've done because we've just not had the proper time to go through the amendments like we did last year. So this year's a little different. And then again, tonight, we're being asked to tell where the the money is gonna come from, which is something that we didn't do last year. And uh I'm gonna record that came from and what uh when that became um part of the part of the process here because well, anyway, I do have some issues that I wanted to bring up and I I'll just go ahead and read them. I don't think they're going to become amendments, but first of all, uh for uh Fiftyth District Court, I would like to see us uh begin planning for adding a drug, a drug court for Fiftyth District Court. We need to begin to put those alternative programs into the Fiftyth District Court. Currently, we do not have a drug court there. Uh there's tremendous need for it and so, you know, I have no idea what it costs to fund a drug court, but it's something that we need to begin to look at as a city uh to plan on implementing. Uh secondly, uh we didn't talk about the cease violence, the anti-violence committee and the presentation on adding that program. Uh that has not been considered in the budget that I know of. I wanted to bring that up because, you know, I think we should uh plan for the funding of that program at some, you know, at some point. Cost of the master plan update, I'm not sure whether that is already incorporated in the current budget. It is, okay, and then um building workforce development into the master plan for economic development. Uh I'm not sure how we need to do that, but we want to be able to build a workforce development uh into that and then the last comment is I would like to see us set a goal for improving the average wage for Pontiac residents. Currently, the average wage for Pontiac residents is thirty-four thousand. I'd like to see the administration set a goal for where we want to see the average wage for Pontiac residents in five years. And let's build some goals around that, let's build some objectives around workforce development around that goal of getting this uh, you know, our our wage up. Those are the uh issues that I wanted to bring into the budget. Just this discussion, but those are the things that I wanted to.
Um Mayor Grimal, do you wanna address the ceasefire question?
Yeah, and and it's it's sort of related uh in terms of funding source anyway to the workforce development, which is, I think it's our working thought anyway that ARPA dollars would be a source of funding for for both of those. So the initial two years of the ceasefire program are substantially more expensive than later years, as we've discussed. And we have allocated five hundred thousand dollars towards public safety using ARPA dollars. So that would be a a meaningful, I think, a logical place to look to to fund, it wouldn't take up the entire five hundred thousand, but it would be a meaningful source of funding for the ceasefire program uh in terms of the initial two years of that program. And of course, the ARPA dollars have to be spent uh within the next few years. Uh the other uh item that we have, and by we, I mean city council and and the executive branch collaboratively, have allocated ARPA dollars towards is workforce development. And we agree with you that the ultimate objective of workforce development is to ensure that more Pontiac residents get good paying jobs. And so as part of ultimately developing workforce development programming, we will be looking at those sorts of of benchmarks and objectives.
Okay, great.
Anybody else statement?
Uh I would just like to say.
Councilwoman James?
Would the, so the the five hundred dollar, five hundred thousand dollar that's already in public safety, do we need to, is there something that we need to do to allocate that specifically? Should we ac- actually add that as an amendment? You know, ceasefire as an amendment to come out of the public safety?
Not.
Do we need to do that, I guess, is what I'm asking.
Mayor Grimal?
Not yet, because first we need to land on a specific price for ceasefire and we've had these conversations, but we haven't quite landed that plane. And then we will ask for that specific allocation from that ARPA bucket as part of also entering into a contract with the uh uh National Coalition for Safe Communities. And so uh that would, both tho- both of those items would come before city council for approval.
Okay.
Councilman Parker was next on the speaker's list.
Thank you, brother president, I'd like to add or amend the the budget for a safety and health inspector. Uh I believe as we talked about it, we, matter of fact, we talked about it a bit the last time in regards to having someone who can go around in some of these mom and pops, people that are selling food and inspect to make sure that it's fresh and good. We also need someone to inspect some of the apartment buildings and, cause we're having some issues that's coming up specifically with some mold issues. There's just so much stuff that we could have and we could probably also include this person as one of the animal control people that we so we can use some of that monies that we're using animal control for health and safety to make sure that everybody is safe and able to do that, which they're supposed to do. The amount would be somewhere uh seventy K.
And what's line of them?
Line item one zero one seven three three seven oh two zero 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 code enforcement. One zero one seven three three seven zero two zero zero zero.
Got it? It and that would come from general fund dollars. Okay, so it's been moved um by Councilman Parker um for that purpose to add seventy thousand dollars to that account number, is there a second?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion now, any further discussion on the motion, Councilman Nichols?
I wanna point out that the state um and any uh food service providers regulated by the Michigan Food Health Code um and it stipulates that the county provider um is that who does all of that safety inspection. Um so I don't think we would have the legal authority to continue, like to overlap or undermine um that based on a state state law. Um but the mayor may have a better understanding of that because he's been in the legislature when they updated the food code.
The I I'm.
Mayor Grimal?
I would not call myself an expert, uh but that's my understanding as well. So I was going to make the same observation that I don't think we have the legal authority to, I don't believe, now again, I'm no legal expert in this area, but I don't believe cities have the legal authority to be a health inspectors in the sense of food inspection, restaurant inspection, that sort of thing. I believe that that is uh delegated to the county. I would also add that even if we did have the legal authority to do that, I think the county has the proper expertise in that area and they are already providing that service in the city, so. And they are already providing that service in the city, so I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel there or duplicate their services at city expense. Now, in terms of the other items, um, we, we clearly want to make sure, as I've said earlier, that we're ramping up. Um, landlord and rental unit inspections, we already, I don't think we need a new position to do that, we might want an additional. Position to do that, which we're open to, but our code enforcement inspectors already do that and are trained to do that, so if. What you're saying is you want to add an additional code enforcement inspector position. So that we have more people working in that area, I think that would certainly be appropriate.
Counselor Rutherford, your next on the speaker's list.
I think the issue is mayor, um, because mold and um. Bedbugs is a major issue in the apartment sector of our community. And it's not being addressed in a timely manner, so much though, when we get to the discussion, I have pictures to show. Um, for buildings that have not been properly, um. Properly inspected in almost ten years, some of them, and so I think that's why it's becoming a concern because we have constituents. Specifically in my district that are getting the ram, that are getting the short end of the stick because. There's a building that everybody's aware of that is not held to the same standards that we're holding Walton Park Manor or the Newmans. Or Lancaster to name a few, I think that's where the concern is coming because. There's mold in Lancaster, we are all aware of it, there are ceilings that are falling apart and um edge, but the water isn't even on. And so that's what we get that this county's supposed to do these things. But they're not, and as far as for food, just to clarify, everybody named mama know that the, uh, some of these re- some of these um. Stores change the color of the food so that the, uh, and they change the expiration date and the meat be spoiled and we still get served it, so I think. If we can't make this an amendment, we need to have a better relationship with the code at the county to call, to, to make them come do their job because they're not. Because I can give you stores where you can go in there and buy meat and it's spoiled, but it's still marked as if it's fresh, so that's all.
Mayor, uh, councilman Parker was next.
Well, I, I think since rather, spoiler, what I'm saying really, I know maybe it is just another code enforcement person, but as I talked, we thought about it and we did talk about it. Well, there's some specific skill sets that need separate and apart from what code enforcement does to make sure landlords and those who are renting properties. Keep their building safe, i.e. as we were talking about Lancaster with their mold, some of the bedbug issues that we're having, and not just Lancaster, but some of the other places that we know. Are not as clean and it's, and, and all of those places, and so I think if we're depending on the county, then somebody need to be. Checking up on the county to make sure they do what they're supposed to do, but if not, we need our own person, just like we need our own person as we talk about animal control. When we talk about animal control, we, we say that the county do it Monday through Friday, but they really don't do it Monday through Friday. And certainly don't do anything on weekends and ours peo- ours, our citizens are left, and at some point, we got to start doing something for the citizens, our citizens. In this budget that says we are concerned about their health and welfare.
Mayor Grimald, did you still want to be on speaker's list?
Well, I, I just want to say that. The only thing that we're saying the county is responsible for is the food, and so, uh, and I don't even know if they're responsible for. Supermarket or grocery store food, to be honest with you, I, I think they're responsible for restaurants, they may or may not be responsible for grocery stores, I don't know the answer to that. But if, if. These things are being reported to the county and the county is not properly doing it, then let's have that conversation and make sure the county does their job. I'm not sure that these things are being reported to the county, but if they are and the county's not following up, let's talk about that offline so that. I can also follow up with the county and make sure that they're doing the job they're supposed to be doing in terms of food inspection. I think we all agree that when it comes to rental units and mold and bedbugs. That we need to make sure that landlords are treating their tenants with dignity and respect and. Uh, again, if there, I know we just had a meeting last week about one of the apartment complexes that has been mentioned. Uh, but again, if, if there are other instances where our code enforcement individuals are not. Properly enforcing, then, then let's have that conversation. Can we use another code enforcement inspector? Absolutely, I, I, that's why I said we, we have no problem adding a code enforcement inspector. But it's not a different position from what they do already, is my point, if we, if we need more capacity, then let's add another code enforcement inspector is, is my only point, and I support that. In terms of animal control, um, we have talked about, and I think we have money in the budget uh now for animal control. And we have talked about, so, so that has already been allocated as part of this, because there was amendment, I think, last week on animal control. And uh, our co-enforcement manager, uh, Mr. McIntyre has quite a bit of experience in that area. And I think has some ideas about how we can utilize that allocation of funds for animal control. You know, I will just say this, that. The county animal control, as I've said before, has two animal control enforcement people allocated just to Pontiac. Now, that's just Monday through Friday, nine AM to five PM. But I have not talked with a resident who has called county animal control during those hours. About dogs, which is what they do, and has not gotten a response from Oakland County Animal Control during those hours. I, I think the challenge is after hours and weekends, I think that's a real problem because. There really isn't any meaningful service from the county during those periods, but during business hours, Monday through Friday. I have not heard about a resident calling county animal control about dogs and not getting a response.
Councilwoman James?
Uh, I, I just wanted to say that I, I do support, um. Increasing uh code enforcement. Because uh, as the department is improving their service to residents. More and more residents are calling in and reporting things. And I don't know about the other uh council people, but I mean, my calls are just going through the roof. And uh, I'm sure they're backed up because it's like, you know, I'm waiting. Three, four, sometimes over a week before I get a response to respond to somebody. So, I mean, it's, it's good, it's a good thing, but I think as we try to do, get the job done, more and more people. Want to see something done about their own situation, so I would strongly support that. Uh, we take the monies that uh, uh, councilman Parker is talking about to add. To the cor- code enforcement department, I think it makes sense, uh. We can look at how that specifically is going to be used. But I think, you know, going forward, we need it because just the, the demand is just going out of the, out of the roof right now.
Deputy Mayor Stevens?
Um, this is for the clerk, a scrivener's error that I gave to councilman Parker when he first asked me about this. The correct line item is actually two four nine, three seven one, seven zero two dot zero zero zero. The code enforcement department has been moved out of general fund and into the building department, so it is moving it from one oh one to two forty nine. It's the exact, exact same concept, just wrong li- wrong line, wrong line item number. The correct line item number is two four nine, three seven one, seven oh two dot zero zero zero.
Counselor Rutherford?
So, my question is for the administration, if I recall, Jack asked. For an additional three code enforcement officers, am I correct or am I mistaken?
Um. As you know, a year ago, we added four code enforcement inspectors. I wasn't aware that code enforcement manager McIntyre had asked for additional code enforcement inspectors beyond that, so that would be news to me.
So it, is it the junior inspect, is something about having trained people to be inspected, I, I recall this conversation, I'm just trying to make sure I'm not. Uh, mistaken. Was there an ask to, um, from, from his side before we do this, to add more code enforcement officers?
Do you want to yield the deputy?
I yield to the deputy mayor.
Um, o- off the top of my head, I do not remember that request. I don't remember that being a request that was baked into um what we sent to city council.
All right, so the motion is to add um for code enforcement personnel, increase that line by seventy thousand dollars. Um, any further discussion on that, on that motion to amend? Councilman Nicholson?
I, I just want to make sure, um, and I, I know this is difficult because people's cost ends up breaking out into many different lines. Um, I, I don't know whether or not putting a dollar amount is the right, I mean, seventy thousand dollars is probably not going to. Cover a, a full code enforcement officer, plus we just talked about vehicles and something like that, so I want to know if there's, if that's the right amount. Um, yeah.
Councilman Parker?
Well, I was just, I personally, I was thinking base salary, but it does not include uh, doesn't include SBR. And benefits, so it probably will be a little bit more than that. Benefits.
The motion before us is to increase that G L number by seventy thousand dollars, any further discussion? Hearing enough for the discussion, roll call on adoption of that proposed amendment, madam deputy clerk.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
That motion carries, the amendment passes, is there any further discussion? Yeah, on the main, on the main budget, councilman Nicholson?
Um, I, I, I just wanted to make sure as we've um talked about earlier in reducing the local and major streets funds. Um, I know there was, I, I, as I'm looking through D P W, I guess, um, I, you know, I went sort of line by line, some things increased dramatically, some things, you know, went down, some things stayed the same. Um, and I, I noticed a lot of roles um that just keep happening. I'm wondering, and I know it's been difficult for us to find certain positions, um, but I, 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 I just want to make sure. As some of my projects have just sort of, you know, through many different reasons, right, we started with a contractor with issues with getting staff and then issues with concrete additives and. You know, everything down the line, it's like, I want to make sure that we continue momentum and not just sort of say, well, we didn't finish these this year, we're gonna do them, that'll be our next year's project. And, and I know that some things have changed, right, like. W R C, so stormwater may, or, or, you know, in my district, some of the projects we anticipated doing likely will be taken care of it through that, you know, met, so I can't really, of course. Compare, but I just want to make sure that if there's additional staffing needs or if it's manpower or. Time or if it truly is, just comes down to contractor issues and we anticipate, some of those things will be alleviated. Because I'd be happy to make another, um, you know, uh, an- another amendment, I just want to make sure that we continue the momentum in D P W the way we need to.
Your, your point is well taken, um, and. Um, just sort of thinking off the top of my head, I think there are instances. Which was reflected tonight in terms of rolling over some of these dollars, where. Instead of happening before July first of this. Construction season, it's happening after July first in this construction season, I'm not aware of anything. Where it's being delayed to another construction season, in other words, two or a year or six months. Now, having said that, that may still be a problem, in other words, if your concern is, hey. Why are these projects not being done until two months later than originally anticipated? I think that may be a valid concern, but I'm not aware of any situation so far at least where we're postponing it to next construction season anyway.
Yeah, thank you, um, yeah, I just wanted to, to, to be, uh, as I'm going through some of them, so the ones that, um. Hit me just as like really year over year and then rolling in the additional funds, I know some things really went up, like engineering, right, we've, we've contracted with. Um, you know, to have a lot more manpower in that space, and I, I understand that, and of course, just the sheer cost based on the fact that we had. Legacy people we were working with that really treated us well for a long time. So I, I anticipated that cost rising dramatically, some of the things that, um, either stayed the same, um. Or, or, or didn't go up very much, just year to year, especially as we're rolling over funds. Um, would be things like pavement markings, um, or guardrails, um, and these are things that I know. They seem puny, but they're things that, uh, you know, matter to what projects that we're doing right now. So I just want to, um, make sure that we don't. Yeah, if, if like the local street is a good example, like, you know, we can only do so many every year. So if Hazel's go- now going to be rolled over into the next fiscal year, um, are we still planning additional local streets? For next fiscal year on top of Hazel Street, or are we just moving just that local street to be our now project for next year? So I just, I, I, because the dramatic, the, the, the budget isn't dramatically different, it just seems like the funds are coming from different. Spaces or being moved from year to year, I'll, I'll yield to mayor.
You can yield it to Mayor Grimald.
Uh, your, your point is well taken, um, one of the challenges that I do think we're, we're experiencing. Is construction cost inflation, and that was obviously evidenced with Orchard Lake and that road project, we discussed that a week or two ago here. But the costs there are much higher than we anticipated, and so that does um create challenges in terms of. The number and magnitude of projects we can do, obviously, and so. When you ask the question, I think it's the right way to think about it, we're rolling over money from last fiscal year to this current fiscal year. But is that going to, um, are we still going to be able to do as many projects this next fiscal year as maybe we had hoped to? Uh, we may not be able to based on construction cost inflation and the impact of that on our budget, um, and just fiscal constraints. Um, as things currently stand in terms of major projects, I don't think we're in danger, well. Uh, we, we, we certainly are not in a position where we need to pull a plug on anything yet, so I want to emphasize that, but. Could there come a point, you know, a year from now or two years from now, where just the increased cost inflation of several different projects? Ends up hitting us so that we can't do a project that we had hoped for, that's certainly a risk or possibility. You know, we have a broader issue with needed street repairs in the city. And we're looking at our options in that regard and the possibility of bringing more revenue to bear, which maybe can, can avoid. Any of those potential problems even if they were to occur, but currently, at least for the, this coming fiscal year that we're budgeting for right now. We're not anticipating that we need to jettison any projects that we were planning to do.
Thank you, I have no amendment.
Further discussion on the motion before us, which is the annual budget for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four fiscal year. Counselor Rutherford?
I just want to thank all of you guys for coming here and doing this because this is hard, we're doing heavy lifting. And it really shows that we're really caring about our citizens, so thank y'all for offering, asking and demanding that the citizens have a place at the table, including the administration. I appreciate y'all.
I, I want to point out that during the budget process this time last year. I proposed an amendment to add funding to allow for the demolition of Purdue School that's located in my district. Uh, I am not bringing that uh to the table to be baked into this particular budget for consideration. Uh, but we are almost eighteen months in, and uh I am keeping score. And track of the calendar, so even though I am not forcing a vote on it. I want the administration to have the flexibility to know that it might be community development block grant funding. It might be some other funding entity or some other governmental agency, um. This will be true for McCarrill School, the former McCarrill School is now city property, per the city council. Uh, we are the landlords of a very large, um, deteriorated property. And we recognize that we expect the city council to consider a path forward on that as well. The budget as it currently is constituted doesn't fund that, so I anticipate there will be a budget amendment or other items that tackle McCarrill. And rightly so, so we can move the youth recreation ball down the field, um, but just know that I eagerly await. Uh, the resolution, the solving of the, the blight on the east side of town that the city owns. Not because this administration or this council voted, uh, it is something that we inherited, uh, but it is a problem that we can solve. And so I look forward to it being solved, uh, and I look forward to the creative and hopefully very cost effective solution. For the taxpayers uh to be very soon forthcoming, I just want to provide that. Clarification to my colleagues of why I haven't moved to amend it, um, because I want it to not necessarily be all in. because I want it to not necessarily be all in burdened on us taxpayers. I would like a creative solution, but if it comes to that, then I hope the administration will have those kind of conversations with this council so we know what gives. Do you want to address that, Mayor Grimaldi?
Well, thank you, Mr. President, and we fully appreciate everything you're saying and agree with literally everything you're saying, so your point is well taken, and I'll add a third building that weighs on us, which is the Old Ewald Center, which is also an abandoned eyesore that needs to come down, and so literally, there's not a week that goes by that I don't think about those three locations where-
Haunted in your sleep?
Yes, actually, so they're very, very high priorities, and we've been exploring a variety of funding avenues.
The city council looks forward to those solutions as soon as they're realistic and feasible. There are other amendments that we could also make, but I want to make sure that we clear the threshold and the hurdle of enacting a budget on time. And this does not close the door for this council, or we the people, for being able to make budget adjustments as the year goes on, as other needs and priorities arise. And to your point, Councilman James, yes, last budget cycle I invested many, many hours to try and exhaustedly go through all the possible amendments, but I'm now battle weary and battle tested twelve months after that to know that there are many other impacts and other ways during the course of the year that we can adjust the budget. So I, I don't want to close the door on that, I just want to make sure that we can adopt this budget and not have to schedule another meeting to make the deadline, because we probably have to squeeze in a special meeting in the next few days. And I don't want to do that to you or to the city. So, any further discussion on the budget before us? Hearing no further discussion, speakers, this is exhausted. What we have before us is the motion for adoption of an ordinance to appropriate the sums of money necessary to meet the expenditures set forth in the budget recommended for the operation of the city of Pontiac, Michigan, to defray the debts, expenditures, and liabilities of said city for the fiscal year beginning the first day of July twenty twenty-three. In other words, the annual budget. Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call on that adoption.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries, the ordinance is adopted. We are now at, and so to the Finance Department Administration, your task is to incorporate correctly and accurately all those amendments just made, so that way the administration, the clerk's office can satisfy what the state of Michigan requires for posting and submission. Thank you. We are now at discussions, the first of the two discussions is Phoenix Center Discussion, Councilman James, you requested to add this. I think you gave us the, the gist, but do you want to queue it up further in terms of the update you're interested in hearing?
Yes, I, I am going to allow, let the mayor clarify some things, because I think a lot of residents are still very concerned about it. His comments that were made when we talked about this last was that this is a deal that the Oakland County is doing, and has, what they're doing has nothing to do with the city. But I, I have concerns about two things, first of all, the, the fact that the city does have this agreement with the parking, the people who are supposed to be managing the parking, and we are still, we still own the parking lot, we still own, as far as I know, the entertainment area where the, the roof blew off. And so those areas, the assumption of the, of Oakland County's proposal to purchase those two buildings and to build a campus there, that assumption is clearly from the picture that was printed in, in cranes. It assumes that they are going to tear that parking lot down, and that they're going to tear down the entertainment center. So to me, there are a lot of questions that, as a citizen, I'm asking that there are a lot of assumptions there that we are involved in, that to me we're being silent about, and, and I don't think we need, this is the time to be silent, I think this is the time to let people understand what is going on with respect to that purchase. And it's specifically how we as a city tie into that purchase in terms of the parking garage, the contract, the ninety-nine, ninety-nine year contract that the previous administration had with that, with that supplier, and also with what we are going to do with the entertainment center. And then also the email that you sent out Deputy Mayor about the cost of the repairs there. I thought, I remember hearing that we had insurance to cover that, I was kind of surprised, I wasn't surprised at the amount that it cost, but I was surprised that we did not have insurance that covered that cost. So there are just a lot of things with respect to the Phoenix Center that I think we need to have some conversation around.
Mayor Grimaldi?
Yeah, so I, I know we, we talked in depth about this a month or so ago, but I'll try to, try to summarize some of the key elements. So first of all, it's, this is a very important topic for the community to be aware of. It has potentially a lot of impacts for the community. When, when we've also talked about the fact that city government is not a party to Oakland County's purchase agreement, I want to be clear about what that means and what that doesn't mean. There is a purchase agreement that Oakland County has entered into with the owners of the two office towers. The owner of those two office towers is a private entity, it is not the city of Pontiac. And so that is a purchase agreement between Oakland County and the private owner of those two office towers. Those office towers have, for decades, been owned by private entities, not by the city of Pontiac. As part of that agreement between the County of Oakland and the private owner, the county would also step into the shoes and assume the lease that that private owner has of the city-owned Phoenix Center. And so if Oakland County closes on that purchase agreement and obtains title to those two privately owned office towers, the county would also become the new la cie of the parking garage from the city, which owns the parking garage. Anybody could do that, so any private entity, any third party can become the assignee, the S and E, of the lease that the current private owner has of the city-owned parking garage. We don't have a, a ability to veto that. So that's simply between the private owner of the two office towers that also has this lease of the city-owned parking garage, and they can assign or sell, in essence, that lease, their lease rights, to the Phoenix Center, this ninety-nine year lease that the previous administration entered into, to any third party, private or otherwise. And that's what would happen if Oakland County closes on this purchase agreement. So they would own, if Oakland County chooses to close, they would own the two privately owned office towers that are currently privately owned, and they would become the new la cie that would have this ninety-nine year lease on the city-owned parking garage. So we don't have any ability to affect that. However, there's been quite a bit of speculation about what happens if the county does close, and what, what does that mean in terms of the parking garage? What it would mean is that they would then assume, the county would assume, all of the responsibilities and rights that the current private la cie has on the parking garage. So the county would then be responsible for making improvements to the parking garage, and they would also have a ninety-nine year lease to the parking. If the county wanted to demolish that parking garage, or build a new parking garage, anything that changes that parking garage in terms of selling it, if the city was to convey that land to the county, that would have to be approved by city council. If the county wanted to demolish that parking garage, that would have to be approved by city council. So the city has not made any decisions about any permanent change to that parking garage in terms of demolishing it, or selling it, or anything along those lines. That, if, if the county wants to do those things, that's something that we, the city, would have to make a decision about, so I want to be clear about that. The city owns the parking garage, and there's nothing about the county's purchase agreement that changes that. The county is currently in their due diligence period, under their purchase agreement, and is looking at the condition of all of the buildings and properties. The county is also seeking to obtain state funding to help acquire and renovate those buildings. That funding, in theory, could be used not just to renovate the office towers, but it could be used to renovate the parking garage, or to demolish the parking garage and build a new parking garage. But if that is the course that the county wants to take in terms of demolishing the parking garage, we would have to approve that as the city. And so that is a decision that we as the city have not yet taken, so I want to be clear about that. But I think what will likely inform some of the decisions that the county wants to pursue will be what financial assistance the state is willing to provide. And we won't know the answer to that until the state finalizes the state's budget, which is hard to predict exactly when that will happen, a lot of people in Lansing are still saying that might occur before July fourth, but that's not for certain, it could take beyond July fourth. So that's currently the lay of the land. I, I do just want to take a moment too and reflect on the narrative that the previous mayor has proffered, that somehow the deal that she negotiated is sacrosanct. The, the deal that was negotiated by the previous administration was not a good deal for the city. It gave control of the parking to a private entity for ninety-nine years. Although the previous mayor says that paying nineteen million dollars for the office towers is a bad idea for the county, that's exactly what her administration did, is pay actually over nineteen million dollars for the office towers, and then sold them at a huge loss to another private investor. And as part of that, the city is still paying off a six million dollar debt that the previous administration left the city with. And one of the things that I've advocated for at the state level is if the state provides financial assistance for the Phoenix Center deal, we should receive assistance and funding from the state to pay off that debt. Whether that will happen or not, I don't know, but that's what I've been advocating for with legislators. That deal that the previous mayor entered into also saddled the city with the Purdue School site, which is a horrible liability, which will cost hundreds of thousands, if not more, to demolish. And so the previous administration's deal around the Phoenix Center was a bad deal for the city, it was a bad deal for the city's taxpayers, and if the county's proposal can help address those problems that we collectively as Pontiac residents and taxpayers were left with, it could be a big improvement for our residents. But it would have to be done the right way, and that's why the safeguard of city council and, and the mayor of us having to approve any demolition of the Phoenix Center, any conveyance of any city-owned property is so important, because we collectively, I know, are not going to sign off on anything in that regard that would be bad for the city. But it gives us a seat at the table, if the county chooses to move forward and close on this property, it gives us a seat at the table to weigh in on the direction that the county goes, and I think that's very important.
Mayor Grimaldi, or Deputy Mayor Stevens, Councilman James also invoked the cost of the removal and remediation of the storm damage to the canopy from the amphitheater site, you provided us per public inquiry and council follow-up. You provided us an excellent breakdown of what the cost was and who performed that work. The question we still have is, so what funding source, or what, how is that bill covered? And if you could just help close the loop on that, that element of it would be helpful. Deputy Mayor Stevens?
Yeah, okay, so, um, those were paid out of city general fund dollars. You are correct that we do have insurance. The insurance has not been claimed because the city had not yet determined if we were going to de- demolish the structure or rebuild the structure. So we are just waiting on that, the structure being the tensile roof. So there are still the support beams that are up there, until we made that final decision, we did not want to take the payout, because depending on what we did, we might end up getting something different.
Mayor Grimaldi?
Yeah, just to amplify that point, all of that is true about the damage to the canopy from the windstorm in December of twenty twenty-one, before all of us took office. But there's another element to this that's important to keep in mind, which is although the amphitheater on top of Phoenix Center is not subject to the ninety-nine year lease, it will cost, even aside from the damage to the canopy, even before that occurred, all estimates were that it will cost millions of dollars to bring that amphitheater and the associated elements of the parking garage that are required to facilitate productive use of that amphitheater up to snuff. And in particular, all of the electrical had been stripped in the amphitheater, the elevator didn't work, and so there are a lot of huge investments that have to be made in order to bring that amphitheater up to working condition. Bands can't use that amphitheater, or other musical artists can't use that amphitheater if they can't get their equipment up there with use of the freight elevator, which has not been working. Obviously, any amplifiers, any other sound equipment needs electricity. So there are lots of improvements that would have to be made there, and the estimates that were prepared by ALK Construction at the time, and I sat down with ALK to go through those within the past couple of months, is that it will cost millions of dollars, presumably on the part of the city, since it's the city's responsibility to bring that amphitheater up to productive use, which again, was another legacy that the city was left with as a result of the previous administration's Phoenix Center deal.
And what's the time window with the insurance claim?
That's a great question, we are well within our window because we made the claim. Now they're just waiting for us to determine, are we going to rebuild, or are we going to tear down?
I have to imagine there's some time window, so if you want to let us know, analyze what that looks like. Councilman Rutherford?
Since I live in that district, it's my district, number one question is this. You've answered the question that we control the vote, if, if the county gets the possession of the building, we actually have the ultimate decision to make if it's going to be tear down, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so this is my only question. Going forward, is there a way for us to get the message out more clearer so that this won't keep occurring? Because if we don't minimize the rumor mill and minimize misinformation, it's going to start a battle in this community, and most people won't say this type of stuff because it isn't, you know, it isn't appropriate. I'm going to say it because I'm, it's going to affect me the most because it's in my district. We have to do a better job on the administration side to be more transparent. I ain't saying y'all are not transparent, but I'm saying make it so clear that a blind man can see, that we don't have any backhand deals, because that's where a lot of this is coming from, and it start, we can't stop the rumors, but we can minimize the mis-, the misinformation. So my question is very simple, when, and God bless if it goes through, what are the steps that are in place to make sure that we're getting the right information so that our constituents, specifically mine, have the adequate information, I yield to the mayor.
You have the floor.
So unfortunately, there are some individuals, this is not a majority in the community, but there are some individuals who are intentionally spreading misinformation, as you know. We have been very consistent and transparent about the truth here, but it's difficult to get that message out, we've repeatedly- But it's difficult to get that message out. We've repeatedly disclosed accurate information here at city council meetings. Uh, I have had this same discussion at community meetings, uh, including some community meetings in your district. And so we'll continue to to be forthright about getting the truth out. I think it it's a lot easier right now because there's uncertainty about whether this, whether the county's ever gonna close. There's uncertainty about how much funding the state might provide. Right now, all we're able to do is talk about possibilities. And so that makes it challenging because. We we are talking about, well, this might happen or this might happen, and there's a lot of uncertainty. I think once we know how much funding the state is providing, once we know whether the county is closing. Um, that will allow us to be more clear about exactly what is happening. As opposed to what the possibilities are. So I think in the next month, month and a half, as we know these these other factors. And whether the county's closing, how much funding the state's providing. It will make it much easier for us to be very clear about what is happening. As opposed to what might happen, and that will make it much easier for us to be very clear with the community about where this is heading.
Councilwoman James.
Yeah, I um, I think I'm I'm a lot more. Interested in what we are doing as opposed to the county. Uh, in terms of our own uh properties. Um, first of all, we inherited this settlement agreement. And from what I've seen, the city has really been the only entity that has actively been carrying out. Or complying with this settlement agreement. I don't understand why as a city, we're not addressing that. Why we're not addressing the leasing with the with the parking, you know, the parking leasing and and the other. Parts of this settlement agreement. Why aren't we administering this settlement agreement? Because nobody seems to be keeping it except us. We are making the payments on the six million dollars. And I I I don't understand that.
Would you like to yield to the mayor?
Yes, I yield.
Yeah, I I take your question to be a question as to not why we're making the payments. On the six million dollars, which we're contractually obligated to do based on the the previous administration's agreement. But I take your question to be, why isn't the Lacy making improvements to the parking garage? Or a sufficient amount of improvements to the parking garage? The Lacy has made some improvements to the parking garage. Uh, but they certainly have not made the level and amount of improvements. That I think many have reasonably expected them to make. I think part of the challenge is that the agreement entered into by the previous administration. Which is to say that they they stuck the city city with, is a very poorly written agreement. It is not clear what specific improvements need to be made. And as a result, and it's also not at all clear about what the city's recourse and remedies are. If those improvements are not made. And so it's put the city, I think, in a very challenging position. Because if we seek to enforce the provisions of the agreement, it's unclear what those provisions are. And what the city's remedies are. Which means, translation to the general public, is that if we seek to enforce those provisions. It's likely to lead to years of litigation in terms of going to court and trying to get them to do. What people think they're supposed to do. And this follows, of course, what was already, what, eight years of litigation, something like that? And um going down a road of further litigation with years more of lawsuits. Is not a very appetizing um path forward. Which is another reason why the county's acquisition of the privately owned towers. And they're stepping into the shoes of the Lacy. Uh, might be beneficial because it might provide clarity as to what exactly the path forward looks like. Instead of this murky, horribly written agreement that the previous administration stuck the city with. Uh, and it's put us in a very difficult position in terms of our ability to enforce anything when it was so terribly written.
Councilwoman James.
I just wanna make a a final comment on this and why I brought this up. If this agreement, if the county does uh are able. To close on the agreement to buy the two towers and, you know. They will become uh dominant, a dominant player in the city of Pontiac's downtown development. They will become a dominant player. And so I think it is. It's a big deal for us and it kind of i- is is concerning to me. That we are not allowing the city to kind of have this conversation. We 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 seem to be creating the uh master plan on the fly here. You know, because this is a big deal. This will dominate, if it goes through, it will dominate. That down uh uh community development for downtown. And and you would think that we would all be in that conversation. Administration, council, and community. Uh, downtown business leaders, that there would be more people involved in this conversation. Than what we have in, you know, than what we currently have. I, that's that's my big concern because i- it's. It's a, it's a big deal, it's going to, if it goes through. It pretty much will be downtown development for the city of Pontiac for the next couple of decades.
Councilwoman Rutherford.
So I just wanna just say a couple of statements because, again, that's District One and I. Oftentimes I'm down there talking to developers, the people who are developers, people who own property there. Not just that people are living downtown. This is a catalyst to change the city as we know it. And we have to look at it from that aspect as well. The big issue is everybody's scared of gentrification. Gentrification is already in Pontiac, so that shouldn't be the issue. The issue is how can we best serve our citizens and best benefit for everybody involved? What we have in this county, and I can say this because I met with Dave Kultur. I asked him a tough question because I had major concerns, is that he is doing this, the county is doing this because the city of Pontiac. Has been underserved for over sixty years. Do you not remember what L. Brooks Patterson did to the city? Do you not understand that we have never had a real person who was in that seat advocating for minorities? Or people from the LGBTQ community or others? So this is a catalyst to change everything. Not just downtown, but the city of Pontiac in itself, and so what we have to keep doing is sometimes we have to wait. Until we get all of the information before we disseminate it to others. I had to learn that because. My emotions sometimes get the best of me and I wanna be like, I want it now, 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 now. And sometimes that will hinder developers, it will hinder people that wanna actually come here and do work. Because they feel hesitant, because they don't wanna feel already attacked. I think we need to let the county do what the county doing, and when it come before us, then we deal with it, and that's all I wanna just say.
Mayor Grimald.
Well, I think that's well said, Councilwoman Rutherford, and and just to reflect on. Councilwoman James's comments, it is a big deal, it's a very big deal. Uh, and as you say, it's a big deal if the county closes on it. And that's, I think, one of the key uncertainties. Uh, and so there's not a lot to discuss until we know whether the county will close on it. And how much funding the state may provide for this. Until we know those two things, there's not a lot to build a meaningful community conversation around. And so we're waiting on those two important questions to be answered, and they will be answered in the next six weeks. Uh, before we can have meaningful community conversation. But yes, if if this moves forward, the county will be a major player in downtown development. And who is the county? The county ultimately is all of us, it's a public entity. Uh, represented now by a Democratic county executive and a Democratic majority on the county commission. Uh, and uh currently, the players in downtown development are all private sector players. This will mean that there'll be a additional public sector player in the loop. And I think that creates actually a lot of positive opportunities for positive development, but it's gotta be done right. It's gotta be done in a deliberative way with the community at the table. But it's premature to have that conversation until we know. A, how much funding is the state providing, and B, is the county closing? And once we know those two things, as I've said earlier, we'll be able to have a robust, meaningful community conversation. About how to do this the right way in a way that benefits the community.
Further discussion? That concludes that discussion item. The second discussion item is Phoenix Place Apartments, Councilwoman Rutherford.
I have to bring this to the forefront for this administration. Because there are at least eight messages on my phone today about the bedbugs. About the elevators not working, about the the air, central air not working in that building. Now, before we say that it is ran by HUD, I already understand that, but. We have things in place like code enforcement, where they have to go inspect this building. Because people's lives are being endangered, and you're saying, what do I mean? When the power went off, there are people who have air supplies that didn't work. There was no backups for that to happen, there was no backup generator for that to happen. So some people were without air or their supplies up to seven and a half hours. I need this administration to put the Phoenix Place on their agenda to have this inspected. It, we gave them what they said they needed us, needed from us a year ago. When we signed that agreement to help them, I forgot what it was and I don't wanna misquote it. But now I'm getting genuine concerns of the safety of people living in this building. And I need you to take this seriously because there's someone right now that is in ICU. Because of all of this infectious things happening in that building. The second reason why I brought it up is because there's a large population of seniors that still live in that building. Who are feeling like they are, to say it mildly, in a New Jack City type of movie. Where there are drugs being sold out of the building, where security is doing minimal to none. And we have to do something now, because we already know we've had three murders out of that building since we've been in office. We've got to do, well, excuse me, two, we've got to do something about this now. About getting code enforcement in there, about getting the city involved, and so I'm pleading with this administration to do something before something seriously happens.
Mayor Grimald.
Most importantly, we do take this seriously. Um, this is the first I'm hearing of of this. I, a year ago, I heard some problems and I understood those to have been addressed, it was actually over a year ago. But this is the first I'm hearing that there's currently a bedbug infestation there, so yes, we take that seriously. Has code enforcement been notified? Have residents there called code enforcement or have you notified code enforcement?
I've notified them, but that particular lady today was threatened today, if she called up here, she was going to be put out. And so when I got here, that was one of the seven messages. When I got here, they wouldn't let me in the gates. Because for whatever reason, and so that's why I came up here to talk about it tonight. Because I don't know if she's still living in the building, she was literally threatened, she's blind, by the way. Um, and she's a, one of our uh small business owners, she's her mother, to express it seriously. Um, it's a serious issue, so I'm 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 worried about her safety and the others. So I did tell them the little about the code, about the bedbugs, but not the seriousness of what's going on now. It's dangerous at this point, sir.
Understood, so we will uh address this first thing in the morning. We take this very seriously. Again, we would have addressed it sooner had we known about it sooner, or had I known about it sooner. Uh, but this meeting is the first I'm learning of this current problem, but we will make sure to promptly address it first thing in the morning.
Other discussion? Thank you for elevating it. All right, with that, we're at communications. You can find the written um communications from the city council on hard copies of the agenda. Or the digital copy on the city's website. Mayor Grimald?
I uh, well, thank you. Um, so. I really, again, wanna thank those who made our Juneteenth event so successful. We had a a really broad coalition of partners who were involved in this. Uh, that included uh Pastor Jones of Wellcome Missionary Baptist Church. It included Pastor Marn and Pastor Jackson of Providence Missionary Baptist Church. It included uh Pastor Whiten of Newman AME. It included Pastor John Tollbert of Trinity Missionary Baptist Church. It included Deborah Finley of the Bowen Senior Center. It included Angela Powell, who was the overall coordinator of all of these activities. Uh, we've gotten a lot of positive feedback about the terrific fireworks show. Uh, but I also wanna acknowledge and recognize Representative Brenda Carter, who organized the parade on Saturday. I wanna recognize again, I know I mentioned them earlier, but I wanna thank our premier sponsors. And they were Genesis Credit Union, Amazon, and St. Joseph Hospital. Uh, they were very, very generous. I also wanna acknowledge our junior sponsor, United Wholesale Mortgage. Uh, and so I'm very grateful for everybody who allowed this event to come together. And I wanna give a special thank you and acknowledgement to the city councilwoman who hosted this event in her district. And the entirety of this event took place in District One, so thank you, Councilwoman.
Objection, the fireworks were shot from the parking lot of City Hall in District Seven.
Good point. So almost the entirety of the event took place in District One, Councilwoman Rutherford's district. But I do wanna acknowledge that the staging location for the fireworks to be launched. Was from Council President McGinnis's district, District Seven. So uh, I wanna thank both the council members. And I, and this was truly a team effort, I thought it came off very well. You know, the first year of anything is always gonna be a little bit of a slow start, but but we had a a big crowd. By the end of the evening, we had a big crowd downtown, and we had great performers. I won't try to uh mention all the performers, but Ronnie McNear was there, RoSpit was there. Next year, we're gonna have even more performers uh as part of the downtown musical performance set. And the fireworks show was genuinely impressive, very professional, and we were really, really excited about it. Uh, and we look forward to an even bigger and better second annual Juneteenth event next year.
And did you have a good birthday this last week, Mayor Grimald?
As you know, Council President, uh, I don't like uh celebrating birthdays, I find it very egotistical. And I shun my own birthday, uh, but yes, my girlfriend and my mother both forced me to go out to dinner with them. Uh, on my birthday. I know that you bring up my birthday repeatedly because you know I don't like talking about my birthday. But but thank you for bringing it up again.
Actually, I just really wanted to point out that Deputy Mayor's birthday was on the Juneteenth celebration. I didn't wanna be crass and only focus on his birthday. I'm not here to torture you always. Deputy Mayor Stevens, how did you enjoy your birthday with the citywide celebration?
It was an amazing birthday gift to have such a wonderful um presentation go on. For the first year on that day, and I was there from the parade all the way through to the end.
Thank you. Any final closing comments? Madam Deputy Clerk, any closing comments? Councilwoman Rutherford.
Good evening. You don't have to teach people to be human. You have to teach them how to stop being inhumane, and that was said by Eldrick Cleaver. I wanna first point out something I have never done before openly, but I wanna do this now. I want to thank Angela Powell for what she did. And I'm, I'm, I wanna say it because I have given her the most hard time since she's been working in this administration. And sometimes you have to give people their flowers when they're due. What I saw was what I've always wanted to see, was the work being done, and I wanna personally tell her thank you. Thank you for putting this together, thank you for strategically working with Tim Grimald and the mayor and the administration. Because the display of love that was shown on that day, beyond all the hiccups. Was something that I lived to see in the city of Pontiac. There were blacks, there were whites, there were cow knees, there were every walk of life. Got to experience what real, genuine Pontiac Pontiac is. And I said it on my Facebook quote, that a city united can never be defeated. And I hope to build on that with her, through working with her next year on the Juneteenth event, but just other events. And I want her, I wanted to thank her for that personally. I also just wanna acknowledge for the moment that we are in such a beautiful place in Pontiac if we see the vision. And not be scared of what it is on the other side. Sometimes when we can't control the vision. Sometimes when we can't control the vision, we get scared, we get frustrated, and we live in fear instead of living in faith. I'm in a season in my life, since I've been in this administration, I've lost five family members. Just recently, my aunt passed on Saturday, but she's my cousin, but we call her my aunt because it's such an age gap. And I was able to show her what it looks like when you use your faith instead of your fear by being able to serve, and she lived in my district. And so Pat, Auntie Pat, what you call her, Pat Red for short, I thank you for giving me the opportunity to be your councilwoman, and I see you in the hereafter. I wanna thank this council because we get told everything that is wrong and pinned down and talked about like dogs because we're doing it differently. We are not allowing our emotions or our frustration to cloud the judgment for what is best for the people. And sometimes y'all don't hear that enough, so I'm publicly acknowledging that. But lastly, I wanna thank the person I give the most grief to, the mayor. Because even when we don't agree, we all have the same vision, which is making sure the city of Pontiac has its place at the table. To M. One, I'm excited about your uh fireworks. I'm gonna be there. I'm wearing my little cute dress. Hopefully you let me in. Still, it's all good. To the people that live in the district, we gonna make sure we can get to a se- a a sensible resolution. And to those who are in fear of what's gonna happen, let's turn our fear off and turn our faith on. We have a District One meeting on Saturday from three to five at the Alley Cat. I look forward to seeing everybody there. And on that note, just keep your head to the sky like Earth with a fire says, and good night.
Councilwoman Parker?
Thank you, sir. I just wanna thank uh Pastor Cassandra Berry for coming and praying with us tonight. I just wanna thank the mayor for continuing to listen to our complaints and answer them quickly and diligently and not losing focus of the overall goal of making this city better. I just wanna thank this council for continuing to to come and do the best they can each and every day and each and every Tuesday to make sure that our city continues to move forward. And with that, I say thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you. Councilwoman James?
Yes, uh we are having uh friends of, friends of Pontiac, uh District Four will have our June meeting on June the twenty second. That's this Thursday at the Newmont Mariah International Church, six P. M. Uh hope to see you there. We will have Jim Nash from the uh Water Resource uh Commissioner speaking to us. And we'll have some other uh guests as well, so hope to see you on Thursday, June the twenty second at six P. M. I also want to echo Councilwoman uh Rutherford's uh comments about how special the Juneteenth uh celebration was. I enjoyed it thoroughly. And uh I've never seen so much hugging in Pontiac in a long time, and it was really a good thing to see. It was just a wonderful thing to see uh the people there enjoying themselves and just hugging each other and and caring about each other. It was a wonderful thing. So I, you know, uh I applaud Angela for all the work that she did and for everybody that was involved in helping to put it together. Uh council, our 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 state representative Brenda Carter and all that was involved. You really, really hit the nail on the head. It was an awesome event. I look forward to Juneteenth next year. And I just wanna congratulate the uh mayor and administration for just a tremendous job. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Nicholson headed apart uh to get some sinus medication, his sinus is acting up. He wanted to share that um the next District Two meeting is this coming Monday, the last Monday of the month at seven P. M. at Goldner Walsh Garden Home. All are invited to join for the District Two Advisory Meeting. Uh for the sake of time, I will just say good night. God bless you. Be safe. Um take care of yourself and take care of one another. Um we reiterate our um message of prayers and well wishes to the three victims from the crash, the vehicle crash at MLK and Osmond uh to the gunshot victims at North Hill Farms and also the Pro Tem Carrington's family as they um heal and rebuild in the Flint community as well. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn? Or it's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Parker, that we adjourn this evening's meeting. Hearing no discussion, roll call on adoption of the motion. Madam Deputy Clerk?
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Four yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. We stand adjourned at nine fifty P. M. Have a great night.